All right. Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. Back to regular schedule. So our January 9th, 2023, regular meeting of the SIO Township. Right. Our secretary is absent this evening, and I would thank Bob Hyde for offering to do that in his stead. So roll call.
Commissioner King, absent. Commissioner Hume, present.
President.
President. Commissioner Sherrama, present. Commissioner Hyde, present.
Thank you very much. And then with that, we'll move for adoption of the agenda.
I would say move.
We have a motion by Commissioner Reiser, supported by Commissioner Moore, to adopt the agenda as posted. Any discussion? All right. Call for a voice vote. In favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The agenda is adopted as posted. Next, moving to communications and correspondence. We did receive an email from Margaret Engel. Anyone else receive additional correspondence? All right. All right. Then we have no presentations requested this evening. So we'll move on to public comment. And people wishing to address the planning commission on matters which we are not on the public hearing. That would be for the Huntley rezoning. This is your time to comment on that. We'll have a then a public hearing for that particular rezoning. So if there are folks either present or online that would like to address the planning commission, please reserve your oral presentation to three minutes unless you are representative of an organized group, and then you'll have five minutes. So with that, I'll.
Point of order, Chair.
Yes.
So the public rezoning is a public hearing tonight?
Yes. Yes. Okay. So anyone wishing to address the planning commission on something that is not the Huntley rezoning? Well, online first, or we'll go here first. Is there anyone present that wants to address us? Okay. Online?
Online, we have one hand up, and that is Kathleen Brandt. So Ms. Brandt, this is a little different for before we start. This meeting was set up as a normal Zoom meeting, so everyone's live. It's not usually we do it in a webinar kind of format. So I'm going to keep, I would ask everyone that's watching remotely to please keep your microphones muted because we can hear you, and your cameras off unless you want to speak to the group during public comment or the public hearing. So first person that's up right now is Kathleen Brandt, and Ms. Brandt, you have the floor.
Okay. Good evening. This is Kathleen Brandt, and I'm a SIO resident. A couple of topics. I notice you have on the agenda, a discussion of the PUD language. And I know that myself, and I have seen content from Margaret Engel, and I believe from Marty Mail, and there might have been other content from other residents. And I wanted to know how that that content or that feedback is incorporated into your discussions? And do you have anything that you're going to be discussing, any language? Because there's nothing on the agenda packet that speaks to specifically what parts of the language you're going to be addressing. So if you wouldn't mind answering that question, and then I have something else.
There is something. It did not, I guess it didn't get voted. Did anyone know? It should be, if you go to the website, you should have the language, the packet has the language that we'll be discussing tonight.
And the red was previous, and the yellow is the latest changes.
Yeah, see, if you click on the agenda and then click on the item in the agenda.
Okay. I did that this afternoon. Okay. Yeah, it's been updated since this afternoon. Thank you. So the other question, how do you incorporate citizens' comments into the discussion? Well, I'll give you, I'll give an example, and I will share an example. I commented about the practice of the planning commission to allow developers unlimited meetings with the the planning consultant that is not reimbursed to SIO Township. So I can look at other townships. For example, Hamlin Township, they have clearly stated policies that a developer is going to get one meeting that includes the engineer, the planner, and it costs them $700. We don't have such things. We give this service away for free. Another example, there's something on the agenda for the Board of Trustees for tomorrow. And it clearly shows that other municipalities, Antarctica Township, Pittsfield, is charging for services. And then it shows SIO Township, and it says no charge. It's free. We are giving away free services. We are not being compensated for it. That was part of my public comment, and I really want to hear how you're going to address that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else online?
No, but I will try to, we'll answer that question when we get to it because I did try to address that.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you, Kathleen.
Yep.
So.
There are no other, there are no other hands up for public comment at this point.
Okay, and we do have folks in attendance this evening, and there isn't anyone else who wants to address the planning commission on anything other than the rezoning? All right. Then I'll entertain a motion to close public comment. Moved.
Or.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Moore, supported by Commissioner Reiser to close the public hearing.
Public comment.
Public comment, sorry. All right. Any further discussion? All right. Do a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Oh, we're closing public comment at 7:10. Right. Then moving along, we do have a public hearing this evening, and that is on possible action on OA number 22007, the Huntley rezoning. And the way that we generally do public hearings on projects is we have the petitioner present, and we hear from our consultants. And then commissioners can ask questions of fact. And then we open it up to the public for comment and feedback. And then we close the public hearing portion, and the planning commission deliberates. So that's the process. So with that, I will open the public hearing on the Huntley rezoning at 7:11. And so if the petitioner would like to come forward, and please sign in on the appropriate form up here, and introduce yourselves. Welcome. Welcome. Go ahead and go ahead and walk us through your request.
My name is Peter Huntley. I'm here actually to represent my wife, who is the owner of the property. Cannot be here this evening, unfortunately. The property is 4.5 acres. It's an elongated rectangle, which can be considered in three parts. The westernmost part is where we have a single family dwelling. The eastern part, next to West Delhi Road, is primarily occupied by wetland. However, the central part of the property is overgrown with trees and serves no purpose at all. And so it is our intention to look at seeing if we could establish a second dwelling in that central part of the property. And the first step is to get the rezoning from A1 agriculture to R1 single, single family dwelling. And we are here this evening to submit this proposal.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to, that is with you that would like to say anything?
I am Jerry Siznawski. I'm a landscape architect with Washington Engineering, and been working with Mr. Huntley on this issue. I've done the wetland delineation of the existing wetland, and I also did the tree survey of the property. So those two items are documented. And any of the proposal respects those two items. There's, you know, the wetland is a quality wetland, and that's respected by Mr. Huntley. And there would be minimum impact on that simply because of an improvement of driveway that has to accommodate fire trucks. And tree survey, there's no, the only reason for removing any trees would be for the same reason for, to accommodate wide driveway for fire trucks.
Thank you. So this is a, I'll talk loud. I've been told people can't hear me at home, so I'll try to speak up. This is a proposed rezoning from current zoning designation, as the applicant had mentioned, A1 general agriculture to R1 single-family residential. One of the primary differences here, one of the primary differences here, of course, is the is the lot sizes that would be permitted. Under the current zoning, the minimum lot size is two and a half acres. This is the applicant has four and a half acres of land. Obviously, they could not split under the current zoning because they would have need a little over five acres, take a simple split. So they're looking to go to our next dense district, which is the R1 district, which allows one acre lots. And that would then allow this particular 4.5 acre parcel to take, in our estimation, up to two divisions. But the applicant indicates that they were only at this time. We'll talk a little bit more about that as I go through the report. When we look at rezonings, we try to look at kind of the surrounding properties and the surrounding zoning and the master plan, and how this request sort of conforms to all of those things. So when we look at the neighboring zoning and land use, if you look to the north, that property is almost identical to the applicant's property. It looks to be about a four and a half, five acre parcel. Very similar configuration to the applicant's. And that is currently zoned A1. To the south of the subject zoning is zoned A1. However, there is R1 across the road. So there's R1 in proximity to the property to the south. To the east of the subject site, our report incorrectly indicates that is A1 zoning. If you see on the aerial photograph that we provided in our report on page two, that little development that comprises, it looks like one, two, three, four, five lots, that property was always owned to R1 a few years ago. So that property directly east of this site is owned to R1. And then the property that is beyond, just to the west of this property from my aerial photograph in our report, you can see what looks like a road. Well, it's not a road. That's utility corridor. And so just past that utility corridor is also zone R1. So there is some adjacent R1, nearby R1 property. There's also some existing ag property to the north, south of this property. So that's kind of what's going on around the property. The with regard to the master plan, the master plan map we provided on page four of our report, that shows the site highlighted in red. That yellow area is part of the township that is planned for low-density residential. That would be the classification that would match what the applicant is trying to do with the R1 zoning district, which is a one acre minimum lot size. So I know one of the things that we look at in rezoning requests is, you know, we try, we try not to do what we call spot zoning, and that's rezone one piece of property that's different than other pieces of property all around you. That's something we do not do, we try not to do. In this particular case, though, when a piece of property is planned for the land use that the applicant's requesting, it's not a spot zoning. It's just, and you know, a piece of property that's transferring to a district that the applicant is anticipating it to be built in. And so that's R1 in this case. And that's particularly true with the spot zoning with the property across the street that is currently also, that was within the last three or four years, also rezoned R1 in a similar situation. Although that property had more property available and more available splits to it. With regard to natural resources, as the applicant mentioned and is noted in our report, it appears there is a significant wetland in the eastern portion of the site. We don't find any floodplains present, and there are some elevation changes, but not significant within the property. If it doesn't sound like the applicant wants to touch the wetlands, typically, two things, with township has its own wetland ordinance, and any wetland over five acres in the area or larger is regulated by the state of Michigan. So any impacts to wetlands that might occur for future development of the site would have to be reviewed at the time of site plan or private road plan was provided to the township. With regard to development potential, again, the property is four and a half acres. If this was rezoned to R1 with a minimum one acre lot size, you know, if you're to do a gross density calculation, that would be four potential land divisions. However, the way a SIO township looks at little area for splits, you have to subtract private road easements, road right-of-way. So after you were to eliminate what would likely be required for private road, which would provide access to a property, you're starting to take away usable property. So I estimate, I estimate three possible divisions, including the existing home. So it's possible to get two additional divisions on this property. That does not consider poor soils. Like if the applicant is telling us the whole eastern half of the property is wetlands, then it's likely you might get only one additional home on this property. I'm not sure why the camera keeps turning off. I'll keep turning it back on. So and then with regard, I should say, in addition to the development potential of the property, we have to look at all the potential uses that could occur in an R1 zoning designation. I will say that many of these, all of these are similar to the current zoning designation, the A1 agricultural zoning district. Well, it is an agricultural zone, and farming is principally is permitted. It is also a residential district. And many of the, many if not all of the items listed here are also permitted in the underlying ag designation as well. But we do have to consider these things. The applicant indicates they want to take one split off the property. But your rezoning, because there's no site plan attached at this point, you really can't hold the applicant to what they're telling us at this point. We have to be prepared to allow any one of these things to occur on site. With regard to traffic impact and site access, typically, a single-family home generates approximately nine to 10 trips per day. And so if you were, you know, as it stands right now, the single-family home, typical single-family home with an active family will generate about 10 trips per day. So if another home was built, that would bump it up to 20 trips per day. If three homes were maxed out on this property, we'd be up to about 30 trips per day. That's really, you know, based on this area, based on the roads and what's on this property, two additional home sites on this property are not a significant traffic impact to the area. With regard to central facilities and services, the site is not located within the Townes Municipal Services District, and that would be sewer water. So they, anything that occurs on this site for new home site construction will be subject to Washington County Health Department. Rules and regulations for not only water wells, but for septic systems. The Township zoning ordinance outlines five items that have to be found, that should be found and considered by the planning commission. We've outlined those five items, and we note that five criteria for rezoning have been reviewed and bound to either be not applicable to the subject rezoning or to be acceptable. But the planning commission, if you have any questions on those, I'd be happy to get into detail about those five criteria. And at this point, based on our review comments, we are recommending approval of the rezoning from A1 to R1 based on the findings of fact that are found within our, within this report. Those are listed one through eight in our analysis. And planning commission, after discussion, may certainly use some where all of these findings are fact in your deliberations or in your final decision for this project. But we are recommending approval of the rezoning. It's relatively small. Impacts are going to be relatively minor. It's in an area that's planned for one acre lots. There's one acre lots that were recently rezoned across the street from it. And I recommend approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions that commissioners may have.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, do you have questions of fact for either the petitioner or for Mr. White? Commissioner Moore?
Okay. I just wanted to, you said something earlier that A1 provided a minimum of 2.5 acres to build on?
Yes.
But in your memo, oh, I see. You referred to the master plan on page three, saying that that area could be one development unit per acre to one development unit per 2.5 acres. Okay. And so the R1 that allows for three divisions or three splits?
It would allow, it would allow a one acre home site. So they could get as many one acre home sites as they could on four and a half acres. But you have to start deleting, you know, without a design. I'm estimating, based on my experience, that they would get no more than three, including the existing home.
Because of wetland?
Because of wetland and because of the construction of what would be required as a private road. Private road is going to take, is going to take area away. The wetland will take.
The private road's not included in there, not included in the parcel?
Private road is not included in the lot area. So that will come.
So quick, I'm wrong, that the petitioner is asking for one split?
They're saying it's four one split, but they haven't asked for the split in this. But they've indicated their contention, but as Doug said, it could change.
I understand. Okay. So they're just asking for the rezoning, not any split right now.
Right.
Okay.
I have a question. Is a private road required now? No, no, private road. So right now, it's one 4.5 acre parcel. So the big 4.5 acre parcel has access on an approved public road. And that's what, if someone wants to build a new home, the big test for a new home is it has to have access on an approved public or private road. So if they were to take a split off of this property, and it would remove the current access that the home and back has, now we're creating a non-conforming situation where we're creating, we'd then be creating a lot that doesn't affront it, which we can't do. And so to solve that problem, and again, I haven't seen any proposal for land division or any, I don't know what exactly they plan to do, except for the applicant's tools tonight. They could construct or plan what would likely be a Class C private road, which could be a 16-foot wide gravel road, which in essence is a cord by driveway. But it's a, it's a design that the fire department has signed off on, and they can get a fire truck, you know, back and forth. And it would solve the ordinance issue of a new home site or an existing home site. In this case, having access to an approved public or private road. In this case, it'd be a private road. So they don't, they don't have enough, likely don't have enough property just to split this. And although, I mean, the landscape architects, and maybe they've looked at a few designs. That's, again, that's really not what we're talking about.
So Mr. Huntley, and so it's my understanding from your remarks this evening is that you're looking to rezon to be able to do, to build one other home. Is that, did I understand that right?
Any other questions of fact or factual questions? Then with that, we'll ask.
Actually, I have.
You have another one, sorry.
Yeah. Where do you anticipate the driveway or the private road going? Would it just be your driveway that's made to code?
When we started this project, it was, think, we had not thought that far about possibly sharing the private road with our northern neighbor. That idea came up quite recently. And we're fortunate that our northern neighbor is here this evening, and he might also speak on this subject. The thing is that the private road is essential, as a gentleman has just told us, if we have another dwelling on our property. But if we place that private road entirely south of our northern border, then the question is, would our northern neighbor have any access to? And this is a question which we have just started to ponder on.
It looks like your driveway is along the northern border of the parcel, correct? Your current driveway, correct?
Yes.
And your house is on the western edge of the parcel.
Correct.
And you're asking to go to R1 for one more house rather than R2.5 or whatever it is? What's the, what's the R, what's the zoning that allows two and a half acre sites?
Well, that's. Well, that's the current zoning, the A1 zoning, A1 or ER. So you, there are two districts.
I got the zoning map here.
Yeah, we have two zoning districts that would allow two and a half acre minimum. One is A1 and the other is ER, state residential.
State. So if he only wants two houses on a, that wouldn't do it because you don't have enough, correct? Unless you got a variance or something like that. And that's, that's all we have is one and two dot, two and a half. And what, what's after that?
Goes to R2, which I want to say is a quarter acre lot size. It starts getting smaller as you go, as you go into the But yeah, the R1 is the next jump down from two and a half.
And do most municipalities have zoning that goes from one to, or whatever is, have to quarter, or have, whatever quarter have, one, two, five, or what are the scales?
It's certainly not uncommon to have, to have that kind of jump. Some have, there are some ordinances that have a five acre minimum that might go for two and a half or five, and a two and a one.
No, because if he only needs, we really, really, he needs two, like a two acre, but we don't have that.
But one minimum is two, I mean, two is one minimum. So we're
No, he can, he can, depending, he can pluck four houses on that. Potentially, depending on the road and depending where the road is and depending on the wetlands or the right, the wet area. What's that?
Doug explained that there's probably only enough room for three. And so his two that he potentially asked for would work. But we can't hold them to the two.
No, I know. I get it. There could be, there could be three foster care homes in there. And I, I, I'm just saying, according, I'm not saying it's going to be, but there could be. That's my takeaway. I'm not opposed to this. I'm just
Considering all
Yeah, 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 yeah.
We're getting, we're kind of getting into deliberation here. So I'd like to open up, you know, for
What was your concern, Mr. Huntley? Would the private road on your northern border, there's some concern over sharing with your northern neighbor. Could you speak more to that?
It's a, it's a possibility which we need to explore. And I think from a design point of view, it makes a lot of sense. Instead of supposing that we put the private road where it comes just south of our northern border. And then three or four years later, the northern neighbor decides that he wants to do the same thing. He wants to spread further, wants to split the property, wants to also put in a private road. So then you have these two roads 30 feet apart, otherwise identical, makes no sense. So right now, if, if our northern neighbor and ourselves cannot agree, we'll go ahead and put in a private road which runs just south of the border. But if we have discussions and look into the legal aspects of it, and it seems to make sense, then perhaps we would put the private road so that it absolutely follows the northern border, having half of the road on the southern side and half of the road on the northern side.
And one more question?
Yes, and I would say, it sounds like you would just have to have easements. You would have to have easements declared at the time you make that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you could probably handle some.
Haven't looked into it yet.
All right, so are we good to
The other question I want to know, have you talked to your neighbors and how do they feel about it?
Well, we, they're here.
I know that.
But we have to allow public comment here.
No, and they're, yeah, but I'm just curious if you've talked to them, you know, on various sides, and how do they feel about it?
The impression I have, it's, it's a distinct possibility that it could be worked out. But I think he should speak for himself.
No, okay, but there's neighbors across the street and there's also neighbors to the south of you. Are they here tonight? Have you spoke with them?
No.
Okay.
If I could just interject some facts about the parcel. So I mentioned that we did the wetland delineation, and that's a large wetland, and it goes off the property. So it's larger than five acres and it would be regulated by the state. And it's a quality wetland. So when it comes back down to, you know, raw acres and one acre lots, there's few things dictating what can physically happen. The wetlands, one issue, it's big. And here, there's just not a lot of space to do things. The other thing would be septic, viable septic soils. And doing diligence and not just chasing some rezoning, we did get a preliminary approval for one other septic field. And then the other thing is the well. And it's not one of those, like Juan had mentioned this, it's not a well-first district. So, you know, but a second well, there's setbacks from the well to the septic field. You know, you're, you're trying to, if you did three lots, you're trying to push too many things in that land that other physical constraints are going to prevent. And then, not to speak out of turn about this private road, but so the way we preliminary laid it out to see if it's even feasible was to run along the north boundary. And because of the physical size of this road, it does enter into the wetlands slightly. So with the state permit, we'd have to get approval if that can even happen. And it's not, the way the state handles things now is they don't mitigate on site. You buy credits in a bank. So, but it, it's small, but it is impacted. And so there's a lot of things happening on this property that influence what could actually really happen. So I just wanted to throw that in, so.
Can I ask you, you, you characterize the wetlands as good or difficult? What does that mean?
Well, you know, wetlands are in all kinds of conditions around the state. And some of them are affected by, you know, urbanization or simply just local roads and whatnot. Well, this one doesn't appear to me, based on its health, the vegetation that's in there, the diversity of the vegetation, the water fluctuation. It, it doesn't appear that's very impacted by surrounding development, either the county roads or whatever homes are there. In fact, I was mentioning Mr. Huntley one day this past summer. It had, you know, it really has a broad diversity of wetland plants, and you don't see that all the time. And then what was happening the day I was there was one of the plants, it's called Joe pine weed, has a purple flower in it. You know, the honeybees, or there're just thousands of them. And that just shows me that that's a real healthy ecosystem. And he was quite impressed when we actually walked into it and saw that stuff. So, you know, we're recognizing that's a quality environment and they're, they're not going to start impinging on it.
Thank you. And Jerry, would you mind also signing in?
Yes, sir.
That'd be great. Thanks. All right. So we're going to move on to the public comment, the public comment portion of the public hearing. So we'll begin with folks that are in attendance here and then move on to online. So please come forward, introduce yourself and sign in. And the petitioners can, if, if you want to just make sure there's room for somebody up there, that'd be great.
My name is Ben Vincent. My wife and I own the property up the north side.
What's your name again?
Ben Vincent, my wife Martha. First off, I want to say I don't have a problem with this, with his rezoning. We have just recently spoke about the road going up to his proposed lots. And the question, question I had first off was, will I have access to that road, to my property as, as it's designed? If so, hey, great. That's fine. I may want to do the same thing as what he's asking to do right now. Our property is very similar shape. So we haven't gone into, you know, how much property he would need to do this or whatnot, or the setback, how much woods, or what would be cut of my property. It's pretty solitary the way it is. It's pretty nice. I don't want to lose that. Let's see. And I guess I understand now more about the rezoning to the one acre lots because that's what it has to be to put another house on there. And you just, so I get that now. And possibly the private road could just be moved enough north so it doesn't affect those wetlands, where you would have to get a state permit and may not get a state permit if you do put it where you want. So I guess they're open questions. I don't know. I'm thinking of the answer here. If I need to, we need to speak more and talk to an attorney or I'm not really sure what.
Well, thank you. I appreciate your comments and thanks for coming.
Sure, thank you.
Anyone else present that would like to address the planning commission? Welcome.
Thank you. And thanks for allowing the public meeting tonight. Hi, Peter. We haven't seen a lot of each other, but I live on the other side of Matt and Martha. So I'm at 1185 West Delhi. We've been in our
Please introduce yourself, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Elizabeth Laporte.
Elizabeth what?
Laporte, L-A-P-O-R-T-E. And I did sign in. So I really appreciate your wanting to protect the wetland. So my concern is, if Peter and his wife would like to sell the property in a few years and then move somewhere else, will that wetland be protected? And in this rezoning, can the planning commission consider the fact that we've lost so much wetland in the last 25 years that we've lived in the area? There's been so much that has been developed. Totally understand that. People that own the property that formerly was agricultural, you know, went through the same process and it got a rezon. But we've lost a lot. And so we have a really nice mini wildlife corridor between Peter's lot, Matt and Martha's lot, and our lot. And so we've worked really hard to try to, you know, be conscious of that. So whatever the planning commission can do to help protect these little areas, these little areas all add up. And so, you know, we see more wild turkey this year than ever. We see hawks. We see, you know, lots of different wildlife, all because we've got this area between the wetland and the woods and sort of open areas. And so as much as we can do to try to protect that, and then also to protect our water resources because we're all on well and stuff. So thank you for listening. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Mary, to the south of him?
North.
West Delhi oddly enough runs north of us. So on the north of the adjacent lot.
North of that.
Yes. Yeah. All right. Well, go online. Is there anyone else online?
We do have a hand up, Mr. Jonathan Greenberg. Mr. Greenberg, you have the floor. Unmute yourself.
Yeah, so you got the name right. It is Jonathan Greenberg. Thank you. I am at formerly of 6250 Park Road. Currently, I guess they finally got the signs up. So now I am of 6089 Green Mountain Circle. As a landowner who went through very similar experiences, what I'm hearing tonight on multiple occasions, and finally succumbing to the need to work with a developer in order to develop my property, I just want to highlight a observation, a distinction, maybe is the better term. When folks like myself and the applicants here tonight, who I've never met before, when we come forward and ask to develop our land, there seems to be this very well-calculated method for minimizing the number of lots that can be developed. And it's certainly justifiable. I get it. You know, you got to leave room for roads and you got to do this, that, the other thing. And it's to the township standards and they're very clear. But yet, when a developer comes in here, they're able to fill in wetlands or push them into other neighborhoods, create water problems, trump all over the rules that you guys normally apply, that I see homeowners apply for. And there always seems to be reasons that you can group a bunch of homes better, or you could do this better. I'm, I'm just a little frustrated with the access that developers have to Siouxs Township and the hoops that local folks who just want to chop their land up a little bit, which is part of their right as the landowner, as the purchaser, owner and taxpayer, they have that right. It seems very different to me and has been a very different experience watching large developments come in versus anything I tried to do in the 90s or in the early 2000s and what I had to finally resort to in order to sell my land to the trailwood developers. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Anyone else jump in? There are no, there are virtual hands.
And I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So.
And moved by Commissioner Reiser, supported by Commissioner Hyde. Right? Any further discussion? Yes.
Question for Doug. Doug, I mean, this is kind of a naive question, but they're looking for R1 zoning, one acre lots, like you said, calculated two homes perhaps max that can be built. But they have the flexibility of building four homes, smaller lots later on. That's their choice, right? Am I right on that point?
Say that again, that last
In the future, should they change their minds, they can build four homes instead of two in half acre lots. They can. One acre minimum?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So go back to our motion. Any further discussion?
I have some
We can still have questions and so, but it's just the public hearing portion.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Yeah, that's it. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay. Public hearing is closed at 7:50.
I didn't mean to jump in there.
No, that's fine. That's, that's good. All right. So now we'll move into our discussion and deliberation and possible action.
So what's the purpose of A1 agriculture? You got to grow it? Why do we have A1 if it doesn't have an agricultural purpose? I mean, because if we let him do A1, then should we let adjoining, if we let him go from A1 to R1, should we let other people go from A1 to R1? To be fair to similar people and the similar thing. So, so why is something zoned A1? Because once upon a time that were farms there? Or I guess why is this A1?
I guess that would be, it'd be history. But then if, what you're looking at is the future use map in the master plan. And so those are the areas that through the master plan, we looked at as the future use being R1 and not A1. Now, there's still a whole lot of land that isn't that isn't, it's it's sort of done, I think, and you can correct me. Doug, it it's based on kind of like closeness to arterial roads and distance from either Dexter or Ann Arbor. It in how that was looked at. And so there already has been some rezonings in the area from A one to R one. But there's a there's a pretty clear boundary for where the master plan intends it to stay A one as opposed to being subject to any kind of change in zoning. We'd have to reopen reopen the public hearing.
Yeah, so I guess.
I don't know. And Doug can probably answer. He's been here a whole lot longer than I have.
Because the overhead, I'm not seeing any farms on the overheads or agricultural use or maybe maybe there is, I just don't see it. Or maybe that's how it historically was. And as you go, you know, so so.
Right.
Yeah.
The ex zoning is both an agricultural zone and a residential zone. So it's not just agriculture. I mean, it's 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 a you know, while that is a principal use permitted in the ag zone, it's also a low density, single family zoning district. So it's a lowest density, single family zoning district. And, you know, in part intended to perhaps promote agriculture, but also to promote low density growth, preservation of natural features, you know, things like that. And so when we look at rezoning, one of the main things we try to look at is the master, the future land use map for township. In this particular case, that's on page four of our report. And although this is just a small zoom in of the master plan. The yellow, the yellow area, this area is actually planned for up to one unit greater. So they're in an area that's properly planned. At one time, and this has been planned this way for many, many years. So the township, you know, anticipated years ago, before my time actually, that this part of township is growing. Was in relatively close proximity to the city than ever. Other traffic corridors that might warrant a higher density. And so if you look around, you know, if you look to the west of this, all of those homes, I said, the west are one acre. Across the honey creek to the east are one acre. So this is an area of the township that has really developed in a one acre kind of configuration. And this is, you know, a vacant piece that's larger than one acre. So I don't know if that helps with that. But so if someone else asked, it's not as if we would say, oh, we granted this person a rezoning, so we have to grant somebody else a rezoning. We rely on all these backups. So we rely on what's the master plan, you know, and we look at those things. So in this particular case, the applicant has a good case. If you're outside of this area that's planned in yellow, you don't have a very good case for a rezoning.
Thank you.
I have a question about the protection because if if it's true that the the wetland is over five acres, it's regulated by the state. And so it would be regulated even for a single family development. Because I think that's one of the issues is we can we regulate the the access, if there's a road access, I mean, there's regulations around it, but we don't. If single family home developments, is that still we still protect the wetland?
Yes, any any impact to wetlands would be covered by, in this particular case, as a gentleman from Washington, Jerry indicated, this is a apparently over five acre wetland, so it's a regular red state in Michigan. So any impact doesn't matter, it's residential or commercial or industrial. Higher growth construction, home construction. Building inland. And even on top of that, the township has its own wetland ordinance, so it would be regulated in that sense as well.
And and if you would kind of go over what regulated it would be, because there can impact wetlands.
But if you. So regulated means that it doesn't mean a wetland can't be filled or partially filled. But it means that before you do that, you have to fly to the state of Michigan for to fill a wetland. And the state of Michigan has to determine, they have a they have a whole process of making determination. But one of one of the tests they use, and it's very vague, I'm sorry, but something in effect that there's no prudent alternative to filling the wetland to develop a piece of property. So they will do everything they can in their review to to look at alternatives that would minimize or eliminate the need for that. So yeah, regulated doesn't mean completely off limits. It means you simply have to apply to either the state and or Siouxsia Township. And then you have to prove that there's no prudent alternatives to what you're proposing.
And I would just say that that certainly depends on who's in office at the time.
I'll come back to you. You got to think it's something different.
Does that mean you're, we should come back to you?
Come back to you.
Okay. Any other?
I take it that since this is a five acre wetland, that there's nothing that we, the towns, the township of Siouxsia could could do to regulate that anyway. So is that correct?
Yeah, not not for, not at the stage of development and the type of development that the applicant's proposing. Sometimes we get into the, sometimes we get into the situation where we can more big T requirements to a developer, particularly if it's a special land use or a PUD or something, we kind of what you're having to be put into a conservation easement, for example. This is not one of those cases. This is a zoning, there's really no mechanism for the township to place additional conditions like that on a rezoning, street rezoning.
How about for R one uses though? Is there any sort of?
I mean, again, the township has a wetland ordinance. The state has their own wetland regulations.
Careful, you're getting me off track again. So this stage is rezoning, a rezoning request. And this does sound reasonable, however. My question has to do with the next step would be to split the property. And what is the process for that stage? Does that this right now?
So there's kind of two parts to that question or answer, I should say, your question. The easy part is that land divisions are reviewed administratively. So if the applicant were to apply for a land division, a simple land division and a land division, you know, people have the right, as I think one of the participants online indicated, people have right to divide their property, you know, under certain zoning designations. And in this particular case, it's administrative. So what we're looking for in land division is, does it meet minimum lot width? Does it meet lot area? Does it not exceed the four to one depth to width ratio? And so there's kind of some minimal things we look at to improve a land. Now, this is a little complicated. It's not as simple as that because the applicant apparently, although I haven't seen layout, but I'm assuming that they would have to develop a private road. And so that, while that's not the land division's review, the private road review does come in front of the land. And it does go in front of ultimately in front of township. Okay, so if the applicant requires a private road to take the split that he desires, a private road will be required and that private road will come in front of the planning commission. And at that time, if the private road is impacting on wetlands, we would say that and he could, you know, make comment. And the planning commission is one of the bodies that would use wetland. So he would have input on that. If that was to come come pass.
If they simply wanted to build a driveway. And not call it a private road, a second driveway on the southern portion. It would go right through the wetlands, but would they be coming through you and doing it administratively as well?
They they could. But the issue with with that, that would be, so we're getting a little bit in the weeds.
I know.
But the issue with that is that would be considered what's called kind of a frontage split, where there was no private road involved. And then you you could take a split right off of the road. But that would require you to have I think in the R ones, a hundred fifty feet of frontage down for on a public road. In this case, it would be Delhi for both, each lot would have to have a hundred fifty feet of frontage on a public road. And what's going to be what would be tricky here, you might be able to, you might be able to configure or each block had a hundred fifty feet. But you can't exceed a four to one depth to width ratio. So by the time you pull your hundred fifty feet out of Delhi, then all of a sudden it's eight hundred feet long. You know, we're not going to approve. So again, kind of a little bit of leads and not exactly what we're talking about, but.
Make me feel more comfortable.
The geometry doesn't work.
Right, exactly.
So it's very likely that a private road would be required to take this split off.
People say that the wetlands encompass five acres.
But not of that site.
In the area.
No, the wetlands itself. Is about five acres.
That would stay.
And do the wetlands go beyond your property, Mr. Huntley? So they are on some other person's property.
Yes, both properties to the north.
I have a question. I'm prepared to move passage, but is this something that we recommend to the full board? So we're just, we're making the findings and the recommendation with respect to this property ID and the zoning of this.
And yeah, I just wanted to say, I think that one, because of the wetland and the fact that it is regulated. Also, wetlands have soils that make it almost impossible to perp. So I think the, one, the geometry of the site, the the separation distance and the kind of difficult locations for septic and so forth, really put some physical restrictions on it. And 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 with that, and it being consistent with the master plan, and I think that there's reasonable protection of of the wetlands, even with a lot split. That's that's my feeling. Anyone else?
I would just say this, years ago, I used to live with new apartments just before the garden, all that got built on Nixon Road. And and it ended in these this wetland. And I was told back then, and I my apartment was looking out at the wetland, I was told, of course, they wouldn't build further because it, you know, those are protected wetlands. And then after I moved out years ago, I realized that they the road, they just cut it right through. You go right on to anyway, it got built on. So I would say that my experience is is that there are all kind of arguments that they we, you know, to the to the extent that we can protect anything like that. This body is definitely interested in doing that. Obviously, Mr. Juan spoke about the ordinance, but
It's impenetrable.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll just add on to this discussion about the wetlands. I don't believe there's anything that changes in regards to the wetlands with a rezoning in this case, right? They could do something now, they could do something later. So I don't even know that that's much of a discussion there.
All right, then I think we'll entertain a motion.
I move that based on the information received from this applicant comma, comments received during the public hearing, comma, as well as the January third, twenty twenty three, report from Carlisle Wartman. And reflected in the minutes of this meeting, that this planning commission finds that the proposed Humpty rezoning regarding ten ninety three West Delhi Road, parcel H dash oh eight dash one five dash four hundred dash zero zero five, from A one general agriculture to R one, single family residential meets the informational requirements of section thirty six dash four sixty one of the Siouxsia Township Code of Ordinance and the factors found in sections thirty six dash four sixty two of the zoning ordinance and recommends approval. Specifically, I am incorporating by reference the page.
Oh, you want the page number?
No, I have right here pages five and six regarding the zoning factors that we all reviewed prior to our voting on this motion.
Got it? All right.
Since there's concern over the, sorry, since there's concern over the A one, R one and other places, should we add anything about in accordance with our master plan?
And and that's a part of the findings of that.
Okay.
Yeah. And it's consistent with the.
Specifically, number two on page six.
Is there support or I would support?
Okay, and support with the amendment specifically stating that it's in performance with the master.
Well, that it does.
Right?
Number two.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? All right, then we'll call for a roll call vote.
Okay. Commissioner Human?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharma?
Yes.
Commissioner Reiser?
Yes.
Commissioner High, yes, Commissioner Culberson?
Yes.
Pass the genetics.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Really appreciate the master plan and all the work that went into it. Then we'll move on to our unfinished business discussion only of our P U D language. So with that, I'll have along, do you want to just kick that off?
Yep, I'll go over this. Before I start, I just want to mention that I'm trying, I'm trying the best I can to monitor this meeting. And I noticed that some of you online are kind of popping out of the meeting and then back into being admitted to the meeting. Whenever, I don't know what's going on with people's at home devices, but as soon as I see that, I let you back in, but I'm might kiss you for coming, but I'm trying the best I can to watch and pop you back into the meeting as soon as I can. Certainly not being done on purpose if anyone's at home.
We'll we'll make a note to try and go back to the webinar format.
Yeah. So.
And just to reiterate for people, it probably was uploaded a little later this afternoon. Revised P U D language and a reminder that this is discussion, any language will be, it it needs to go before a public hearing and the planning commission. So right now, we're just in discussion mode.
Yeah. So yeah, and ultimately, what will happen with the P U D language is there will, once the planning commission is comfortable enough with it, there will be a public hearing. And at that point, that's the formal mechanism for the public to provide input to the P U D language. Of course, at the beginning of our meeting, we Of course, at the beginning of our meeting, we also will accept whatever comment that people might have at that point. But but we're still in the discussion stage, and I know I got this to you guys yesterday. With holidays, I just wasn't able to get this out as soon as I'd like to, so I apologize for that. But there are some nuances to this. It doesn't look like there's been a lot of work done to it, but there's some nuances that I think I would like to outline to everybody. And that will include how I tried to address some of the comments from the public on this on this ordinance. So in answer to the question that came up from the public during public comment, I have, I try to keep notes of public comment. I have the minutes of meetings that public comment was made. And when I make amendments to an ordinance, I'll take, I try to look at the minutes, I look at my notes. I try to cross things off when I think I've addressed them or not. I might not get everything, but I try to address most things. And if I miss something you said, you know, please let us know. We still have a fair amount of time before this is up for public hearing. So very first item is, and it's shown in yellow. The yellow stuff is the stuff that I think I wanted to kind of concentrate our discussion on. The the material that you see that's red on this ordinance is our items that we've talked before, talked about before, that I don't think we had a lot of controversy about. But I left it in there just so you could see that that's the new language from the existing PUD ordinance.
So is yellow new stuff or yellow stuff that you think is important we should focus on?
Both, but mostly new.
It's not like track changes, I could see different colors or anything like that, but the yellow is the the added stuff based on comment?
Yes.
Thank you.
So yeah, I'm quite, I'm not adept enough at Microsoft or to show a third kind of, so I just highlighted in the yellow. So the first one was this, we had a fair amount of discussion on where we were going to permit. And, you know, there was, there was a little split decision, I think, on the part of the planning commission about this idea. The language that I proposed for discussion was something to the effect of limiting PUDs to only the sewer service district. And we had some discussion about that. I, you know, I provided information to the planning commission that as a planner, I don't like to take an option away from the township, kind of, I I use the term take a tool away from, you know, tool out of the toolbox. And although I proposed that, I wasn't necessarily personally supportive of removing the all of the districts. That ultimately will be up to the planning commission and township board to make that decision. But to try to maybe start the discussion on a little bit of middle ground, it seems like a lot of the, a lot of the issue with PUDs outside of the sewer service district had to do with the site, it's kind of something for density bonus. And so as you can see from the language I'm proposing here, is we are, we're still, this language would propose to still allow PUDs in all zoning districts with a couple of conditions. The first is that PUDs that only contain residential uses located outside of the sewer service district would not qualify for a density bonus. So they would be same amount of homes as you would get under normal zoning. You could cluster those, you could do things to preserve open space, but you're not getting this 25% bonus. That is in the current ordinance or 30% bonus that's in this new proposal, new proposal. So that is new, and I throw that out for discussion. The second point is is that, and this is, this is in the current ordinance, basically. And so if you have a non-residential PUD or a mixture of residential and non-residential land, if you're outside of the sewer service district, you can't propose a PUD if it has non-residential components outside of the sewer service district. That's kind of similar to the current language. And there's not a lot of changes, so if you, let me kind of go through all of these first, so we don't get too hung up on something, then we can come back. So I want to give you, and this will help me explain to you how I tried to address some of the comments from the public. The next section that's shown as highlighted was a comment from one of the folks online, who I think knows the township trustee, and that was that maybe we should talk about fire services as a potential benefit, material benefit. That is just, why not, you know, we're kind of beating around the bush on it, why not just throw it out? And so I just added, and fire department facilities. And that could be considered a recognizable material benefit.
Can be recognized as what?
One of the possible benefits. One of the.
Community benefits?
Yeah.
And I think we all have to remember, we talked about, we talked a little bit about this at our at our workshop meeting, that while I'm, that while this is in the ordinance, and we talk about things like trails and utility system upgrades, and now we're adding fire department upgrades, it's important to emphasize that we're not buying, you know, not allowing it to go pretty to buy an approval. You know, they can't give us a bunch of paths and a fire truck and a new pump station, we're going to give them approval. Okay, it still has to meet all the other standards of the ordinance, and we can't do that anyway. So we're not, that's not what this is. This specifically says those items, utilities, fire pathways, that have some relationship to the subject property. There has to be some relationship to the project they're proposing, that these would be included in some manner.
So if you were building an all-one-story building, we couldn't accept payment towards a fire truck with a ladder?
Again, ladder.
Because, let me just, I'm thinking through it as I'm saying it. Because that would not really be subject to that parcel.
Sure, because the fire chief has said that even a single-story building has a tall enough roof that he can't safely get up there and work the fire from the top down.
But you're on the right, that's the right, I think that's the right thing. It's like.
Does it have a relationship to the?
But as, but as, you know, Bob said, that you could probably make that relationship. You know, there's, there's a way to make that return to the discussion. Yeah, yeah, certainly we want to discuss it.
And is that in C2?
Yes. It should be highlighted.
What's highlighted in yellow is and fire department facilities.
Right.
Oh, I see, relate to the subject project.
So so let's move on, then we can kind of, you can go back and start, start from the top there. With regard to residential density, on page two, the highlighted part there, there was, there was, there was a fair amount of discussion about how, you know, density is established for a PUD. And the current, current language says the zoning ordinance or the master plan or the density as proposed in the township master plan. So and that was, that was, I think, used by developers. It was looked at like maybe that was too, I heard everybody, maybe that's too definitive of the statement, like we're just giving them the density regardless of the master plan. So I tried to soften that a little bit by saying the township planning commission may recommend to the township board that the density as proposed in the township master plan be considered based in part on the compatibility of the density within the area of the township and which is located. So that that provides a little bit of discretion. You know, an applicant just coming and say, well, the master plan says one acre, so I get one acre. And what the master plan says multifamily, so I get multifamily. And so this allows the planning commission to say, well, the master plan does say that, but there's nothing like that anywhere near here. It's not compatible. You know, you could, this could even be expanded, or, but I tried to just, I I personally, as a planner, I wanted that connection of the master plan to still be there, but maybe allow the planning commission to have a little more discretion. So that was my intention. Moving on. This is a big one that you guys haven't seen before. So I, although it was talked about a little bit, I did Jim through, I'm not sure if people were picking up on what Jim was putting down, but this was talked about because it was talked about a while ago in our ordinance committee. And that was, they had to do with how you come up with the density. So right now, you come up with density, you know, a PUD project, that's going to be clustering project, clustering lots, because that's the only reason you need to do this. Based on the underlying zoning and a conventional plan. So in theory, if someone's doing a PUD where the lots were clustered, they would have to show Sciop Township a density plan of how the project could be built convention. Those, those conventional layouts are usually really bad. And not all cases, but generally, they're kind of unrealistic. They're, you know, it's, it's hard to, for, for us to say, no, you're never going to do that. That's just crazy. You know, you never build something that would wipe out all the trees on the site. But in theory, they could, you know, they could propose something that's horrible. So and then we get into this argument about is this a proper density plan or is it not a proper density plan? So we had kicked around, I've been kicking around for quite a while, this idea of rather than a density plan, that we have a calculation. And that we, that we, we base the underlying zoning on a base, a base density calculation that I provided at the end of this ordinance, which I'll go, I'll go over in a few minutes, because I don't want to get caught up in that yet. But instead of a plan that's unrealistic and creates, you know, problems and concern, that we have a a calculation that can be relatively easily determined for what the base density should be. And although, although that, you don't have to do that, but I, I'm throwing that in there as something to talk about. I think it was briefly talked about. So page five, one of the folks tonight who called in indicated, indicated that they, you know, had concerns about staff meetings with developers and developers meeting too often with staff and and residents not having enough time or understanding what's happening. So hearing that comment, I've made it, I made it, and this is intended to address that comment on page five. So the yellow part there, it used to say concept review meeting prior to the submission of an application for PUD. It shall meet with zoning administrator, member of the planning commission, and such consultants or staff as deemed appropriate. And generally, those meetings, they have to provide the concept plan. Doesn't have to be real detail, but a concept plan, sometimes it is detailed. And they'll, they'll ask for our input. And so we'll, we'll say, well, you got to, you know, address wetlands, utilities, you know, blah, 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 or the kind of the basics. You know, I understand the concern that has been raised, and I've seen this in other communities. So what I'm, I'm putting out there for planning commission consideration is that we eliminate that meeting and indicate that concept review occurs at the planning. And so, concept review, again, agreed prior to submission of an application for PUD, the applicant shall meet with the planning commission at a regularly scheduled meeting. Additional concept meetings may be requested by the applicant or the township. That can shall present at such meetings. So they provide, they provide all the same information that they would provide at a concept review meeting with staff consultants. But instead of a meeting that's here at the township, that's not a public meeting, that you refer to this. And I've seen other communities that do this, so it's not without precedent. So now, that the only problem, it's not a problem, but the only issue with that scenario is that an applicant can make a staff review meeting with staff relatively easily. Like they can, I'm here every now Tuesday, Thursday, it used to be Monday, Thursday. I'm here every Tuesday and Thursday. And generally, if an applicant called a week or so in advance, we could set up a concept review meeting within a week. Now, if they want a concept review meeting, they're going to have to get on a regular plan. If this was adopted, they'd have to get under a regular planning commission scheduling, which we put them back a little bit. So anyway, that's, that's one way I tried to address those concerns. That would be on the public, everyone will see it. There'd be no concern about, you know, too much, hopefully, too much time with the consultant. The next one, oh, this, this next one goes along with that comment. It says the planning commission shall provide comment and ask questions of the applicant regarding the concept PUDs or implements the subject name. No, from, no formal motion of the planning commission shall be taken. Concept review meeting as it currently stands is not an action. There's no action taken, it's not, it's not getting any approval of any kind. They're just getting comments from staff and others. Presumably, those staff and others would also be at the planning commission, so they could get the same kind of input. And then the whole, the whole idea of the meeting is that planning commission would hear a concept idea, provide classified input before, you know, it was presented to you formally. And and it would have good indication, you know, kind of where they stand. I think that might be the last, oh, so that's the last of the changes that I made. Again, nuanced those changes, so there's actually a lot to talk about, but it doesn't look like much, but there's a lot of nuance there. And then the last thing that probably is going to take some time for you guys to digest is the last item I gave you. That is, it's actually, it would be a whole new section of the zoning ordinance, and that is the last, I hope, it's the last two pages that you have. It's starting with section 36 dash one dot one. And this would be a brand new section of zoning ordinance called Base Density Calculation for Open Space and PUD Cluster Projects. So this would be a way that we would calculate base density for not only PUDs, but also for open space projects.
What pages in? So page 10?
But it's not in red, right?
Yes.
No, it's not in red.
It's not in red, so.
But this is all, this is all.
Page 12 and 13.
I don't have a page 12.
Yeah. It's not numbered.
Yeah, they're not numbered.
Kim, you might have it.
It's a separate, I think it's a separate.
It's not numbered. Section what?
Thirty-six, one fifty-one.
One fifty-one, okay, and which section would the AB? Would you ask questions? Within that section, what? Okay, ABC? ABC, okay. What about ABC now?
This is the new, this is a whole new section. Okay, this will be a whole new section.
I can take a look at it. I don't, I didn't print it out.
So let me tell you the gist of it. Let's tell you the gist of this. Is the gist, instead of a drawing, we would use this calculation to determine the number of lots available on a piece of property. And by doing that, the basic idea here is that you have an acreage of the property. So you have the full acreage, and then you start, you start subtracting acreage.
Oh, the base density calculation for open space, that, 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 yes.
And so, so the, the, the idea here is that you have an acreage, say it's 100 acres for say the argument. And then you start subtracting based on what's on the property. And the things that I have that would be subtracted for is right off the bat, you subtract 20% for utilities, roads, stormwater. 20% for development is a kind of a longstanding, a real thumb for what comes off a piece of property or infrastructure. Throw storms, or storm guard detention, things like that. So right off the bat, you have 100 acres, you're taking 20 off that, that you're not going to be able to use for lots. And then take 25% of all wetland areas off of the usable area. And the reason that we're taking 25% and not all of the wetlands is that wetlands can be included in a lot. So if you have a standard, say you have two and a half acre lot, two acres will be wetland. As long as you have a half acre that's upland that had a perk on it, you could put a house on it. So you can't eliminate wetlands completely from the idea of density. So, you can't eliminate wetlands completely from the idea of density because wetlands can be used in the overall density calculation project. If it was conventionally zoned. Like, for example, a gentleman today wanted to take a split, or maybe they took two splits. Part of that new lot, part of that new one acre lot, or two acre lot, half of it could be wetland, you know, who knows? I'm taking twenty-five percent out because there are impact, while you can't remove wetlands completely from the density calculation, there are some impacts there in terms of your property that you can't fully, can't fully develop on that. So, I took twenty-five percent off of the, off of that calculation. And I don't recall where I got twenty-five percent, and I think it's based on something, but that, that could be tweaked, but anyway, that, that's, that's why it's twenty-five percent. All, all land within the high water elevation of any lake, pond, river, stream, or creek, obviously, you can't develop water. So, that, come, hundred percent of that. Where a public sewer is not available. Also, property that would come off is half of the property that's not suitable for septic. So, if you had a hundred acre parcel and fifty acres wasn't suitable for septic, you have to take twenty-five acres, you have to take half of that property off. The reason is that people are very creative when they develop lots, especially in land division situations, that they, you know, part of a lot probably is not suitable for septic. Part of the lot is suitable for septic. So, I've seen a lot of creative land division shapes where they figured out the spot that perks, and then there's plenty of property that doesn't work. So you can't say that the whole property has to perk. You just have to say that one spot that the Washington County Health Department approved perks, unless the property doesn't. But, I'm trying to recognize the fact that there are limitations and impacts if there are soils that are not suitable for septic. And then the fifth one would only come into account if there is an on-site waste water facility and all of that property that's within on-site waste water. So, and then I gave a little calculation, it's real simple, it's usable lot area, usable lot, lot area divided by, usable lot area is that area subtracting one through five, divided by the underlying zoning district will give you the base density. So, and I gave you a little example of how this could break out. If you would, if you would like, I could apply this to a couple of actual projects to see how it turned out. And I think, actually, I think the example is an actual project that I gave you. I forget which one it was, but I could do that if you, if you're kind of on the fence whether this is a good idea or not. But, I mean, that's the idea here, is that we, oops.
So with this?
So, but, but, but that's, that's the idea, is that we go to a calculation instead of a fictitious plan.
What, what about a, you know, a mature woodlot? I mean, is there anything that you could perhaps for that? I'm just thinking.
Since we are putting, we want to save the mature trees.
It would be how you, how you would define a mature woodlot.
Well, that, that, that would be part of it. But, you have to kind of remember too, why people would even cluster something to start with. So, and why we would desire someone to cluster something. I mean, it's desirable to have a clustered project to save the trees. But if someone was to do a conventional development, which is usually reflected in what we now require for a density plan or, you know, a conventional plan, those plans, now think of subdivisions of fifty years. There was no such thing as clusters. So you had to, every road that was built wiped out a bunch of trees, a home site wiped out a bunch of trees. Cluster project is intended to preserve those things that are worth preserving and cluster homes and roads on areas that have minimal impact. So.
So what you're saying is if you take too much of that out, you will lose the, the incentive to do the clustering and then you basically force them into doing something that's conventional.
Yeah, into a conventional subdivision for.
That messes with.
With homes, you know, homes and roads from north to south is the best. And that's how I see it.
I just want to point out that you might want to tweak the numbers. But I like the idea of calculating what the area of a conventional plan would allow and then coming up with your bonus based off of that. But, but I want, I want to point out that twenty-five percent might be a little bit low for the wetlands when they can't fill in seventy-five percent today. Not all of them. But we might, I, I might want to flip that number and consider flipping it to seventy-five percent. And let them fill in twenty, even twenty-five percent is a lot to fill. But I also.
Again, you want them to preserve the wetlands as opposed to doing a subdivision and then paying, you know.
I know, but if we let them.
Do we want them to fill in wetlands at all?
No, but I mean, they have the option, I mean, if, if they do a regular.
But I was trying to say, if they did a regular development, they wouldn't be able to fill in seventy-five percent of wetlands, okay?
If, if it was a poor quality wetland, I mean, I guess it, it was small, let's say, I don't, it, it's how big the wetland is too.
Okay.
And the quality of it.
Yeah, and whether the state of Michigan would approve it or not. You know, so, but you're, we're kind of, by clustering it and keeping them out of the wetland to begin with, you're sort of taking state out of the equation that they were going to make a ruling about. And I'll say that, I hear that wetlands have been filled inside of township. And, uh, two observations. One, if you look at the wetland map for South Township, there's not a significant amount of wetlands inside of township. There's just not. There's a big cluster of wetlands in the southwest corner of the township. Southwest quadrant, I should say, of the township. But, in association to Hine Creek, in association to Huron River, Mill Creek, there are some, but not as much as you would think.
We have somewhere in South Zee that are being talked about being filled in on a five acre property right now.
Yeah, not saying there's none, right. But I'm saying, over the years, it is not, and my observation, that a ton of wetlands have been filled in. It just, it just doesn't.
I would, I would just saying that I, I want to keep an open mind on what the numbers are, but I really like your idea. Putting a calculation up. I also wanted to say that the streams number, you say a hundred percent. It sounds great, but if you look at our, our wetlands ordinance, it talks about, I think it talks about streams and waters in there. And there's buffer zones that would take you beyond a hundred percent. I mean, you have to go X number of feet beyond the edge of the stream that you have to buffer as well. So you can't build on that. It's almost like it's a hundred and twenty-five percent of the acreage of a stream.
That's true.
I don't want it to conflict with our current ordinance, that's all.
I have a question. For you, Doug. Does this calculation that you're proposing, does that allow for more density?
This is to get the bonus density calculation.
Does that allow for more bonus density?
No, it would, it's, it's a way to try to calculate.
Yeah, I get that, but I'm just saying though, this system that you devise or you're proposing, does that generally allow for more density?
Probably less.
Yeah, it should, that is certainly not the intention. The intention is to allow the amount of density to get conventional. So I, I don't believe it would allow more.
As opposed to arguing over a plan where they've maximized how many lots they can get? Then, then you argue about whether you could really do this or not. You know, because they're trying to maximize what that basis is. So we're trying to say, no, let's make something that's more realistic.
Would there be a time? The problem that I have with those is it fixes us in to density bonus.
No.
No, no, no.
It's, it's, the calculation is the base of the density that they could do. And if they do other things, then they could get a density bonus.
Remember, this is in the PUD. And they're trying to figure out how much bonus they can get.
Right. I'm very aware of what a density bonus is. I just, you know, right now, I'm concerned, and I've expressed this in various meetings, about density bonuses.
But this would only be in the water and sewer district. Nowhere else.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, so this is only in the water and sewer district as we're writing it right now.
Yeah, we're proposing to. We're proposing to eliminate the idea of density bonus outside of sewer, sewer water district.
That point out, it's wording for that, you drop the water out of water and sewer district. So I went, I wanted to ask, was that intentional? Because we do have a sewer service district, and we have a water service district. And today, it talks about the water and sewer service district.
What, wasn't necessarily intentional, but generally, generally speaking, sewer is the more limiting factor than water.
Maybe we want to change the language where water and sewer appears elsewhere.
It feels so sneaky. Yeah.
So, either we wanted to say both, or we wanted to say one.
Oh, I would support sewer only, sewer district, right, because of the whole limited one.
Yeah.
And just make it consistent everywhere.
Yeah, there's other paragraphs.
I don't, I don't agree with that.
Okay, so this is the discussion.
Yeah, and, and I want to say further that I don't disagree with your characterization that much of our discussion was surrounded with density bonus. A lot of our discussion did surround density bonuses, but it also mostly surrounded where PUDs should be allowed. And that's the major piece. Not that the density bonus is not a major, is, is not an important piece for us to consider because we slathered it through our different areas. But anyway, the open space ordinance and the PUD ordinance. But I do want to remind folks that a lot of our discussion was whether or not these PUDs should exist. And then if they do, where they should be allowable. And that's a huge issue for us to discuss and decide where we're going to go. And I have my notes here from your initial June third, August seventh, twenty twenty-two, M O. And it was either to leave it like it is, where PUDs can exist in residential, on Jackson, off Jackson, anywhere with no restrictions, or only PUDs, not outside the sewer district. And I always have another rule about density bonuses. So, you know, I, I want to restate that I believe that our use of PUDs should be along the Jackson Road corridor where sewer and water exists. I don't know how we dropped water, but maybe I'm, wasn't paying attention to the general conversation of the several meetings that we've had. I never discerned, though, I never divided those up. You know, we have, uh, so anyway. And the reason that I think, I've been doing some thinking about this. Initially, my response to leaving, having all these PUDs in the rural areas of our community is that it was creating more traffic, creating more urbanization in those communities that I did not feel was appropriate for those communities. And after thinking further about it, I feel that the PUDs, I've come down from saying we shouldn't have PUDs to the PUDs should be relegated or allowed only in the sewer water district along the Jackson Road corridor. And I say that because it seems like our concept, and maybe I'm not getting this right, because we've had a lot of meetings in which we talk about this concept of mixed use. Now, people have defined it in various meetings, different ways. But from what I can gather, I think mixed use is commercial residential. And yet, we are not getting any residential components down Jackson Road. And we wanted to, that, that kind of mixed use, I understood it was in discussion. Now, you talk to some other members and they say, no, no, it's only mixed commercial use or whatever. So, you know, I'm not so sure that people really have a and when I say people, people on the planning commission have an agreeable working definition of what makes, what, what the policy of mixed use is. But let me just finish. So, I believe mixed use should be residential, commercial. And to be able, as we've talked about before, turning that Jackson Road corridor into a pedestrian area as well. We have to be able to have a, a policy that, that encourages developments of residential mixed use. And right now, we don't have that. It's all talk. And I think limiting these PUD developments to residential uses along Jackson Road corridor will help to develop some of these spots. Because we're starting to, you know, we have a few spots. And, so that's, you know, another reason why I kind of changed my mind is maybe that will help to encourage people to build mixed use, commercial, residential along Jackson Road. Right now, it's all commercial that we're seeing, all commercial. We're never going to get there, as I understood being expressed in meetings, that we wanted to have both residential and commercial and restaurants along the Jackson Road corridor. Create a, a pedestrian, more pedestrianized community along Jackson Road. So, that's all I wanted to say about that, is that I would be a vote for limiting PUDs to the Jackson Road corridor that already has the sewer and water districts in it. To be able to create that vision that we've been talking about along the Jackson Road corridor.
But I do want to say that we did something significant in the, in the master plan because we recognized that the Jackson Road corridor, you know, required the mixed use. And people typically did it as commercial, interpreted that as commercial mixed use. And what we did is we allowed multifamily only as an option. So, because recognizing that we didn't have multifamily there, that we would want to consider multifamily only to help the overall mixed use of the corridor.
Yeah, I mean, we do have that one project, Wood, I think it's Woodview, right, in Baker.
Right.
I mean, that's a, that's, I think, in line with the vision, if you will, of the Jackson.
Yeah, and that is, that is a, a mixed, it is mixed use. But anyway, I think you're right about that, that whole piece. I have a question. The open space requirement for the, an open space project versus the open space requirement for a PUD, the, the numbers are different. Can you remind us what those are?
An open space project, which is not a PUD, is an open space project. Under the open space provisions, the ordinance requires fifty percent open space. And that is dictated by State Michigan. Home zoning ordinance is have to have an open space provision. And then the open space is fifty percent. In our PUD ordinance, that open space provision is thirty percent. And why we landed on thirty percent is a secondary number that it's been in the ordinance for quite some time. We certainly could adjust that, but that's.
That's a good point.
Because what I was thinking about is if you aligned, just because there might be, you know, the, the issues of non-conforming uses and so forth. But if you made the PUD, as the only, the only reason you go through a PUD process, once it's longer, it's more expensive. You've got to prove community benefit, you know, all of these things. If you made it equivalent to what the open space is, everybody's, any developer would go through the open space process. And the PUD would be reserved for those really, there wasn't any other way kind of project where there was a non-conforming, non-conforming issues or something like that. What I'm trying to do is that PUD and outside the water sewer district is really only used for exception cases that there aren't any other options. And if you make it so you, it, it really would be equivalent to the open space ordinance, then everybody, the developers will obviously go with the open space project unless there's a, a, a real issue. And then you. A, a real issue, and then you still provide an option for someone to deal with their. Um, it to. Deal with an issue with their property.
For, for example, the, the, um, Sio Green PUD, which has, I haven't heard from in a while. But, you know, they were gonna do a variety of housing types, some attached units, some single family. They're low density overall, because they have a huge piece of property. But they also, remember, they wanted to do like a farmer's market, they want to do a small, a school, I don't know if you remember that.
I don't think this, it was just the old plan, the planning commission.
Was this along Baker Road?
Yeah, this was on Zee Road, uh, just north of, that, we're, just, just north of here on work. There's a PUD called Sio Green PUD. Um, current owner still own it, and they might still be considering it, but it stalled, uh, for the last couple of years. And it was a really unique. Project that could not have occurred without a PUD. And I remember, the density was actually less than they probably could have got otherwise, but they had, they had a lot of ideas and. PUD is a great tool for allowing kind of this, you know, set of ideas and development. Situations that couldn't cover standard. It was, I remember, it was. Everyone was pretty supportive of that project.
So how does that fit in? I mean, I get the uniqueness of what you're saying, uh, that type of project. But how does that further? The goal of open space. Low density rural areas in our community.
You didn't say.
We, we.
Open space.
Listen, when I look at the master plan, it talks about. Rural versus urban. And if we just deal with these projects one at a time and not have an overall concept of what we do, we just say, no, we don't want to take away any of these tools. Because we might want to do this, we might want to do that. And, and then we wake up one day and we got this and this and that all over the township. Is my point here, but we're kind of getting it, we want to, we want to, I get the idea of not taking away a tool. Generally speaking, I agree with that. What I'm having a problem with is. We're talking several different concepts and we're not focusing in on even the Jackson Road corridor that we talked about. In terms of mixed residential use, and so I'm, I'm, I'm saying to you that. We need to take a bigger look at what we're doing. Not just what we can do here or a specific project there, a specific project there. Because that's what planning is. Now, I, I realize that we are limited in what we do with planning commission, but. You know, we come up with all these rationales for things nonetheless.
Well, no, I agree, and a- actually, if you looked at the planning stuff that we want to do. Part of that is really dealing with the Jackson Road corridor. And, and we have to budget to actually really look at. And, and study that, and how do we, um, promote more of those pedestrian. Um, mixed use and work with developers to do it, and I.
And I'm suggesting you a PUD is a worth, because we can't make people's. You know, I mean, we don't create the developments.
No.
We don't, the board doesn't, but the planning commission doesn't, but one way to make sure that it, it could be used. Is we can direct people that come to us and they want a PUD, a PUD, and say, look, we, you know. We have this available. We have this available and direct them to our ordinance that says this is what you do on these, you know.
It, but, okay, but the, the question here is where? Do we eliminate that PUD? And what I'm trying to support is. That we eliminate the density bonuses, we eliminate everything, so it is still an option to do a more creative project. But it isn't gonna be dense, it's gonna be, um.
What they can do without.
Right, it, what it's gonna do, right.
See, that's the thing I wanted to point out. We want to eliminate PUDs, because a PUD was intended to allow clustering so that they wouldn't, um. They could get more dense. But overall, they couldn't, uh, put in any more units than. They could do with their zoning today, okay, so out, out in, uh. The rural areas, they could, they could have two and a half acres. Per unit and they could cut up a hundred acres into two and a half acre plots. Put a house in every one of them, and that's a development that could exist. But if we.
And, and that's fine.
Well.
Because that would not be as dense as what these PUDs are bringing to the community in these rural areas.
But the only reason why they're allowed to do that now is because of the density, oh, the, the density bonus and how that base is cal, is. Argued, I should say, rather than calculated.
So I'm sorry, I don't understand, people get a density bonus even though they don't do a PUD?
You don't.
No, it, right now, you get, you, the density bonus is almost automatic. Because one, you, you, you have that base plan. That we argue about whether it's realistic or not.
A non-PUD project.
Yeah, right, a non-PUD project, then if they do a couple of things, they get a density bonus. Okay, and the things that they have to do are relatively, it's.
Oh, in the open space ordinance, I see.
And, and increase the open space, so what we're trying to say is that doesn't, will not happen in the rural areas anymore. You still can do a PUD that allows you to not have to divide it up into two and a half acre lots. But you can't get any more out of that. Density out of it. So you can cluster it, so it's more dense, so you have more open space and you can protect all those open areas.
So what I'm kind of, think I'm hearing you saying is that. You prefer a PUD. To, with more density than a regular, well, let me finish, a regular development that has one to two acre housing units.
They have the same density, it's just how you pull those, you, you.
But they don't have the same density, because you can only put a dwelling on one to two and a half acres.
Right, it, over the overall, it's the same density, but you collect those together so you can protect woodlands, you, you. You protect woodlands, you protect wetlands, you have larger contiguous open spaces. And the impact of that development is much less. The environmental impact of a smaller, more close compact development is way less. But, oh yeah, it's way less.
So you don't think that there's more cars?
Nope.
No, it's the same amount.
If you don't allow a density bonus.
Okay, imagine, if I can, imagine, so imagine a hundred acre parcel. Let's just say, for example, you don't have to subtract anything, so a hundred acre parcel and one acre lots, let's say you get a hundred lots. Okay, so your, your fictitious one acre parcel or, uh, and a hundred lots. Or your hundred acre parcel and one acre zoning get a hundred lots, now let's say. And that would be a hundred lots spread across the entire rectangle north south east west that developed the entire parcel. Um, let's say there's a great wetland on the property and let's say there's a great woodland on the property, those are going to be severely impacted by a conventional.
Well, I thought we had an ordinance to do with our wetlands.
Well, they have to mitigate.
You, you could still, you could still impact those, you can still impact trees, you still impact all kinds of things.
What though, we had a tree ordinance?
This is, this is the.
Well, except you pay.
Tree fund.
You pay. Oh, is that all our tree ordinances?
Well, you put as many on as you can and then you pay, yeah, basically.
And so the idea of the cluster, the idea of taking that, doing it as either a PUD or a cluster project. Is you still get a hundred lots, so the density is exactly the same, but you'd cluster them in smaller parcels, density is still a hundred. Same traffic impact, same impact to schools, same impact to everything.
I'm not so sure that that's true, because these PUD, these, the Sloan. Well, what's the other one?
But they all have density bonuses.
Density bonuses, yes, but if you eliminate that, then you are no more dense. So how, how the sewer water district, don't allow it, that's how he's written this. Don't allow density bonus. You're gonna keep the same density that you would be allowed today in a conventional development. But you can save wetlands, woodlands.
Well, then why am I seeing PUDs with two hundred, three hundred units on?
Density bonus.
Well, it could be density bonus, or it could be that the prop, underlying property is planned for higher density.
And, and that's where you get into the A one. Yeah, in the A one areas, you're not gonna have one acre.
We are.
Where?
Oh, in A one, I'm sorry.
Right.
No, because you rezone them with the PUD, it's the same thing with the Sloan, Sloan property, it's A one, but we would agree to rezone it. Uh, well, it's, I mean, the PUD is the rezoning, so you can build more units on them.
But there.
I mean, I get the, I get the open space requirement.
Yeah.
In the clustering, I get that, I understand.
We're doing two things, one is we're giving the planning commission. The, right now, it just says you can use. It, it, it would be more explicit about whether or not you use the underlying zoning or not for the master plan. So depending on what the surrounding area is. The, the planning commission can say, no, we're gonna go with the underlying zoning because there isn't that type of density out here. In, in master plan, we have more, it's a stated. Um, discretion. So that's one thing that controls that density too, and then one, there's no, absolutely no density bonus.
Yeah, the master plan is the controlling element. So if you're outside of an area that's planned for higher density. Can't get higher density. Period. We've never done that, so township has always held their master plan. We can't just really nearly show, really nearly throw a PUD and tell that. Something can happen. The, the heritage project. Is planned in the last master plan for higher density.
Yeah.
So that's why it's called in higher density.
And I, I don't agree with that.
Well, I, I.
I'm trying to say to people, I understand we changed it in master plan and people have denied that, but I know we changed it, so that, that, those two projects could occur. But I'm, I'm, that's why I'm trying to, it's not a fault thing, it's like, what is our goal overall here? When we make these ordinances and these revisions. And. I mean, you're, you seem to be saying to me, well, we're not gonna give these density, density bonuses anymore. And yet you have a proposal for a calculation instead of a planned density, and you're allowing within the revisions of the PUD for density bonuses.
In the water, only, only in the Jackson Corridor. In the water sewer.
Sewer district.
Yeah, water sewer district.
Only in the South Water Sewer District, where we want to make sure that we have those.
The very first thing we, the very first thing we talked about was eliminating density bonus. Outside of water service district.
Oh, I see, I see, just.
Yeah, the first thing we talked about.
If we do the first thing, then we can do the other thing.
So.
Uh, so I think the other.
That's what you're saying to me, I, I get what you, I think I get what you're saying, that's why you're saying to me. If you did eliminate the density bonus for PUDs outside the sewer district, sewer water district. Then you still have the same amount of units going in, they're just clustered, I didn't understand that before, but now I see why you're saying.
Yeah, I think, yeah, and then I think the other thing we have to do is increase the open space requirement, so it's the same.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good, I, I think Jambor is a good point.
Instead of thirty, make it fifty.
Make it fifty.
Yeah, if you, if you make. Make it less desirable. Then people will only use the PUD for odd situations outside the sewer service district. And, um. It just becomes more desirable. Again, getting in the weeds, I'm sorry, but.
But no, I think that's important, because that's what we want, you don't want them using the PUD unless it's a, a, a really. Creative, different type of, of project outside.
So there wouldn't be a density bonus for, other than the Jackson Road corridor.
The water sewer.
Water sewer, well, that's why I'm just gonna say the Jackson Corridor, or, but actually, there's water sewer.
It's outside of that.
Corridor, and then, the, the, ala. Sial View on Liberty. Um, or even where Mr. Rizer lives, but anyway, um. Oh, jeez, I forgot what I was gonna ask you.
If we can move on?
Yes.
But, but I, I'd like to make just one comment about the water sewer district, we're not trying to trick anybody about the water sewer district. In fact, I think the water district is bigger than sewer district, so, so if we'd say water sewer district, try to increase it here.
Well, we already said it, we're revising from that, the current plan, the current ordinance talks about the water and sewer district.
I would just say sewer district, because it's.
Might be, and I wanted that to be discussed.
District than the water and sewer, the sewer district extends beyond certain locations.
So let me, I just thought of what I wanted to ask you.
Yeah.
So these PUDs would allow for wastewater treatment? Private wastewater treatment systems?
Yes, because they need to take the bonus if they're outside of the sewer district.
I understand that, but we're, we're encouraging, I don't know if you've read that article about. Uh, these, all these private wastewater treatments that I think Ms. Eagle attached to her. On her, uh, letter to us, but anyway, that would be, we would be encouraging these wa, these private wastewater treatment facilities. On these.
They could do that today anyway.
No, less so, because they're relatively expensive. And so if you don't have the density to pay for it, you, you. You have less affordable housing.
I think it has to do with. Yeah.
Well, look, look at the connect to Columbus. They, they're proposed, their proposal had a wastewater sewer treatment. And that was for forty or fifty units, but it, it didn't. It, it's outside of the water sewer district, so. It wouldn't be a lot of bonus, is all, they, they already could do it. We're not encouraging it by this ordinance. At all.
Yeah, but we are encouraging it in the sense that we're increasing, we're calling it this clustering, so you could go ahead and do it. As opposed to single family homes, which you can be septic and, and, uh. Um. Septic and, and individual wells.
So I think.
But I won't. People want to move on.
Doug, you mentioned the section B, point number two, twenty five percent of all metal areas shall be subtracted from the lot area. So if they don't have any metal lands, what, what can you do there? Can, can build a house? That means that amounts to increase in density then?
Yeah. That's just taking away property.
So a lot of areas in this corridor don't have metal. Which means good number of them can increase the density through this clause.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, can I interrupt her, Ms. Sally, she's probably gonna correct me about the water.
No, I just wanted to clarify, Doug had it right, the water district encompasses almost the entire township. Um, the water service district, so just so you guys know, that's pretty much almost the entire township, the sewer district is much smaller, um, it runs. Mostly along the Jackson Road corridor with a few offshoots, um, but it ends. At Liberty on the south side and it varies on the north side. But, um, just wanted to make that clarification, Doug, you had it right, water district is much bigger than sewer.
So the Sial View complex. Does, is outside of the sewer district?
No, it is in the sewer district, with the most recent update to that contract, it is within the sewer district.
So where is a location? That is outside of the water sewer district, but inside of.
Water district would be Heritage Woods.
That's true.
Heritage Woods is outside the sewer district on the north side, anything south of Liberty is outside the sewer district on the south side. But both are within water district.
Okay, um.
So.
Go ahead.
When she says the water district is the entire township.
I was gonna, I thought of.
That means if you're to do a map with water. Most of the township can have municipal water, is that what, or what?
Can I get some of that?
What does that mean by water district?
Right.
What's?
Go ahead.
That is the area that the township has agreed can be serviced by water. However, there is provisions in the ordinance that if there is not existing water main there. The developer or the resident would have to pay to bring it to themselves.
So can, so it's potentially. You can have water from the city of Dan Arbor, the city of Dexter, from where?
City of Ann Arbor is where Sial buys all of its water from.
So no matter how rural, no matter how western, no matter how southern, if there's, they can. They have the right to have water piped out there?
If they pay for it, yes.
Okay.
Uh, I am pulling up, I'm gonna see if I can find the contract maps for you. I'm here to show you.
I, I didn't, you know, I've got the master plan and maybe there's one online that I can look.
Yeah, so the sewer language is important, and I think that way, if you just say sewer district, then somebody doesn't get in to an argument about what, and. I, I have a. I, I have a, a question, um, oh boy, I didn't know. Um, the addition that you made for implementation of, and included native and mature trees, and I was wondering why we included natives instead of mature trees. Do you care if the mature trees are native or not? I mean, we want people to plant native species, but if they exist and they're mature trees, we don't, I don't know if we value native trees over adaptive trees.
I, I don't, I don't recall.
But, but aren't some trees, aren't native trees better than like, than autumn olive and box elder? Are, aren't there some, like, aren't there some?
Yeah.
What's that? Yeah, it's, yeah.
Yeah, but there's also, they're invasive, but there's an adaptive, I mean, there's sort of the invasives that you don't want, then there's adaptive mature trees that uh, you know, you would value because of the canopy, the.
So, so we should say non-invasive trees, or?
Yeah, I think that would be better.
Non-invasive mature, mature, non-invasive.
Trees, yeah, as opposed to native, yeah.
Where's that at?
I saw that too.
Do we have to define non-invasive?
We have to.
Okay.
Um, Doug, uh, back to the point I was mentioning earlier. So then when I think about this, all these points, number one, two, three, four, will add to the density and increase your numerator in the formula, A, A being usable lot area. So the result is that if anything along this corridor will essentially be waived of these requirements, there's no street, there are rivers, there's no sewer, right?
There'll be streets.
There'll be major streets on Jackson.
Yeah, you build it into your development.
Streets in the development.
So you, you have to put in a private road through the development.
He's saying, uh, he's saying, for the, for example, he's saying all twenty-five percent of the wetlands should be subtracted, there are no wetlands, you can build something on it, so you increase density, right?
Well, it's not increased density, it, it'd be.
It'd be, you could do that.
You can do that now. It, it, what you're trying to come up with is a, is a formula for what you could develop on the site. So that's the base density, it can't be more than what's, that, the, what the zoning allows. The base density is what you could do on the site.
But these calculations are only to get your comparison, uh, number of houses, units you could put on the site.
Right, right, but supposing, but it gives the op- option to in- increase the number of houses you can put if there is nothing to subtract? No?
I see your point.
Yeah, so what, what we're trying to say is, let's say, if, if the property has no wetlands, no woodlands.
No streams.
It, you know, so you, you could probably, you know, develop it up to its maximum allowable density. However, if it has poor soils, a lot of woodlands, a lot of wetlands, y- you wanna be able to, you, you don't wanna argue about it, you just wanna say, no, you probably couldn't develop it um, to that, to that density, to that base density, is kind of what the thinking is.
You cannot do more.
It's more like you do less based on some of the conditions, the site conditions, so you're not arguing with the engineer.
I have a question.
That would be, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Hugh.
Is that a, a question, or maybe a comment about the, uh, the addition of the fire department language in there, the fire department facilities, um, it's on page one. Uh, the, this list of recognizable and material benefits, is it that the developer can just pick something that's on this list and say, I have done this, or is that? I guess what I'm trying to ask is, are we gonna get a bunch of developments that say, we're gonna contribute money to the fire department, or fire department facilities by adding that language in there?
It, it's, it's negotiated ultimately with the trustees. And with the development agreement. So these are the things we're listing, things that have.
Could be.
And have been community benefits in the past, as a, a menu of things to think about.
Gotcha. May include, but are not limited to. All right, I didn't see that language earlier.
And I know we talked about with the inspector community benefits, we discussed, I think I brought it up about making affordable housing a piece of community benefit, but where did that, where did that?
Two, one.
It's in the bonus.
That ended up in the bonus section.
Go to. Two forty-seven, A one.
What?
Two forty-seven, section two forty-seven.
On what page?
I don't, three.
And it's. Yeah, it's a minimum, this is one of the criteria, if you're now in the Jackson Corridor, that you could get a bonus if you're providing ten percent of total units in affordable housing based on current ownership or housing. Using Washington County, New York City as the base for our category. Because that's what they do, you have to use the base that you're in, the community you're in, basically, figure out what's technically affordable, so that would be the average in Washington.
And how does that affect your base calculation model?
Oh, not the.
So.
It affects whether you can get a bonus.
Right. So would this be in line with your base calculation? Because here you say a minimum of ten percent total dwelling units. Oh, I see, it doesn't talk about.
That would just be part of, yeah, that just.
Yeah, now, the question that I wanna kind of bring up, and this ties into the later planning discussion, is some of these things that we're putting in for density bonuses, I wanna also have a discussion about, um, one, affordability, some municipalities are going to what's called inclusive. So any development needs to include a certain percentage of affordable housing. Um, as opposed to making it a density incentive, right, a bonus. Um, it's inclusive, or we also wanna have an E V charging order, so if we think we're on track, you know, to go ahead and get the P U D ordinance going, it's better to have these things in the density bonus. But if we're, you, you know, going to, I don't know how fast we, you know, it's sort of like chicken and egg, at least it gets this out there, and then we can work on the overall planning and, and talk about whether we wanna do inclusive um, afford- affordable housing. Um, if, if, you know, write the E V charging ordinance, so it would be required no matter what. You know, i- it's sort of a, a process thing. Is this, you know, are we going to go ahead and have a public hearing and move this along, and then amend it when we bring on those other ordinance?
Yeah.
So we can at least get close. Yeah, but this is sort of the baby step before some of the other.
So I wanted to ask you something else. On page two, at the bottom, with residential density, you cite density bonuses of up to now thirty, twenty, how does that impact your base calculation for density?
So that would be, so if someone was in the Jackson Corridor and within the sewer district, that's the only time you'd qualify for density bonus. If you're in the sewer service district and you met, you know, all three of these elements um, which are listed below, uh, you, you would, let's say you, you met the maximum thirty percent density bonus, um, you would add thirty percent onto that calculation.
So instead of a hundred units, you can do a hundred and thirty units?
Yes.
Right. If you're in the water sewer district.
Oh, I see, so the language that says units permitted in the underlying zoning districts, that's how it's limited to.
You get to pack them in, because you got sewer, and we.
And it's in an area where we wanna.
Where we wanna downtown district density.
That walkable, whatever, yeah.
Yeah, because, you know, it's all been lip service up to now.
So.
So that was affordable housing, that was tough. Go, just going up, E, provisions. I'd like to see a percent.
It, it would be.
Because one.
It would be all, it would be have to.
It doesn't say.
Yeah, okay, that's a good point, and I think we, what I wanna do is tie it in with the, the D O E program of the, so it defines everything.
That's great, I thought it was supposed to be.
Yeah, and we can, we can add that language, so it's the, yeah.
If you wanna, if you wanna send me some language on that?
I will do that, and that also aligns it with the um, Inflation Reduction Act. Um, so they get additional bonuses for doing that.
So this isn't based on?
Other items?
There's a lot going on.
Yeah, I'm just.
There's a lot going on.
I'm having to draw back to.
Okay, uh, let's, can we talk about the, yeah, can we talk a little bit about that concept meeting in the planning commission? Coming before the planning commission?
That's a big change.
It, because one of the things are, there's some really bad ideas that come up in the concept meetings. I mean, that don't go anywhere after those concept meetings. I'm just, uh, you know.
I have a good sugge- I have a suggestion for, instead of saying coming before the whole planning commission, that it be a, the concept meeting be a public meeting that's announced, and the public can zoom in or come in. Why not have it just be a, an ad hoc meeting, but it's announced and it's posted? And then the public would have input instead of that. It, it wouldn't be as uh, regular an occasion, so they wouldn't always know it, they'd have to go look, you'd have to have a, a way of announcing.
Another thought was, if you give some consideration requiring that developers of a certain size project to meet with neighbors prior to coming to the planning commission?
No, I mean, no.
Because I'm thinking, that is, what I, what I'm, what I'm concerned about is, in a planning commission meeting, and, you know, I can see how people get frustrated, there isn't a dialogue. And.
No.
And, but if you had, and, you know, it can be hosted by the township. Um, and it could even be by Zoom, um, that, that they could hold a, it, it could be then a discussion meeting where they present, people can talk, and voice concerns and so forth, but it's after that concept stage. Um, but still, before they've done a bunch of work to come before planning commission with a, with a, with a site plan. And it would be of a, you know, would be required of P U Ds, it would be required of, I don't know, you come up with them. Because to me, it's the dialogue that's important. And there, they'd still have to be the notification within, you know, a certain distance and so forth. And because to me, that's what sometimes is difficult.
It's part of the concept meeting where it's.
It would be after the concept meeting, because I still, like, some of these things that come with the concept meeting, it's like, you know, thi- this really shouldn't go anywhere, we would, you know, you know, planning mission was, or there are issues with it and so forth, that, you know, all of a sudden, people get upset about something that nobody wants and it's not gonna go anywhere. As opposed to, it goes to the concept meeting, but you have a, an opportunity for people to have a real dialogue about the project before it comes to planning.
I think, but I actually do remember, apparently Ann Arbor requires something like that, it's like a developer required meeting, then the township doesn't, the city doesn't have any product, actually. I could look into that.
Because to me, it, it's that, it's the dialogue, and, you know, that would be helpful.
Trouble is, if the township isn't, if the planning commission isn't, or the planner isn't involved, then it could devolve, I mean, just because they have a meeting doesn't mean they have any.
They didn't have any kind of agreement.
Yeah, I thought that the, the public input on that was about the cost.
About the what?
Like, the number of meetings that a developer has access to. And why aren't we charging the cost? Well, we are charging the cost, right, Doug?
Uh, they charge a cost for the engineer.
Okay.
And so that's more of a trustee issue to review fees and make sure we're covering.
The, the planning.
They may, they may charge for the planning commissioner as well.
They, they do, it's a higher fee if we come.
I.
But, to your point, you know, there's a lot of different ways we could skin this, I mean, we could require a flat fee that includes planner, engineer, planning commissioner, that's higher than it is now. And that may disincentivize, if that's word, um, the number, the number of meetings uh, that, that an applicant might have. I mean, I, I put this in here because it was my perception that there was this, that, that this conversation should be occurring more publicly, which is funny to me.
Yeah, I think the public did want that, they wanted input, so.
Where is that in, you said that in here?
Page five, B at the bottom, sort of midway, yeah.
Got it. I thought, though, the, the comment from, uh, Ms. Brandt tonight, that I, that I heard regarding this, is just that we are, we as the township are paying basically for free consultation for these developers and access to, uh, our own, our own, uh, planning consultant, so, I, I think that was, that was Ms. Brandt's, uh, point, uh, sorry if I'm, if I'm mis.
I think she was talking about, we have the concept meetings where we have the engineer, there we have the planner, there we have.
She brought up the fact that we're not charging for it.
Right, and it costs the township money.
And there are multiple.
But we are charging for it, so.
We're only charging partially.
We're charging enough to cover the community, it would be.
So, so what does Ann Arbor do, what does Pittsfield do, what does Ipsy Township do, we're, we're, we're not the only game in town on development. I mean, we've got costs.
She was claiming that Pittsfield Township's, uh, document that's in their package showed that they charge for it more than we do. She didn't say it that way, but that's.
So, and that's something that's in the purview of the board of trustees.
And, and, and.
The fees, I mean.
That's John's question.
Ms. Brandt has her hand up, so if she was here in the audience, you'd see her hand go up, so it's up to you guys if you wanna recognize that.
But I, I wanna, so I, I, I'll just go on the record, I, I think that's a messy way to do it. Um, we don't need more people, we just need people that we're trusting in the room. And I'm not so sure you can have a concept meeting with the whole community involved, so. Um, to me, I think the point, the fact that there's the planner there, the engineer, planning commission, and whatever other staff.
Trustee, utility, fire chief.
Yeah.
Often the supervisor.
Um, but, but, I mean, people may have different, uh, ways of, of interacting in them, I mean, the planning commission. Um, certainly, we bring a different, sometimes, point of view to these meetings. Because it's, you know, a lot of times our input is based on what we think is gonna fly, or is this in line with our vision for the Dexter Road? Um, um, plan with mixed use, et cetera, et cetera, I mean, there are a lot of different things that come up. But I just don't, I think this is, I don't like this idea, but thanks for taking a stab at it, Doug. I, I understand.
So.
This is more than we have time to do in our meetings, you can see how much time we take and what we do already, I just can't see this becoming a planning commission responsibility, concept meetings.
I mean, isn't how much we charge really kind of a policy decision by the board? You know, with, 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 with costs to be determined by the board, I mean, whether we, you get one free meeting, whether it costs a thousand bucks and that gets you one free meeting, or as many meetings as you need, or I, 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 I'm just pulling up.
So that's the other issue I think Ms. Brandt brought up, which is developers have more access than, than the public. So, I mean, I, you know, maybe they get five meetings, they definitely need to pay for them. But maybe that, so that we need to recommend to the board that they. But maybe that, so that we need to recommend to the board that they take up.
I don't know what the standard is or should be. I don't know, the, I don't know if there's a right way to do it. There's just different ways to do it. One of the ways for not charging people is you want development to come in so that your tax base goes up and we recover it in the end. I, I, I'm not saying I believe that, but there's probably pro and con, give and take on both sides of it.
Well, also, I think the other thing is oftentimes developers will come in with a really crappy idea. And then don't wanna have another concept meeting to re- revise that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and so part of what that is, is uh trying to get developments that are compatible. That meet the criteria, e- et cetera. And it's, it's a question of at what point. You know, should the public be aware? I think they feel like, one, they're caught off guard because, you know, they get. You know, oh, whatever notice, couple week notice of it being a meeting, and so.
So are we talking about capturing costs? Are we talking about involving the public sooner?
Both.
So how do we do it? I think the.
So obviously, the B O T is responsible for raising the fees. That's something we don't.
Or addressing the fees.
Addressing the fees.
Addressing.
Whether they raise them, lower them, you know.
Yeah, 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 we're saying the same.
Things, one meeting, two meeting, each meeting, that's.
No, the meetings could, we could deal with the amount of meetings.
But I don't, is that realistic for a really big complicated project, some of the.
What is what realistic?
To only have one or two meetings if it, if it's a tricky thing? I don't, I don't know enough about it.
I, 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 I mean, I think, I didn't say one or two, because I do think that there's value in. The developer coming and bouncing things off of the, the SIO Township. But I do, my, my sense is that there's a distrust of the process, so I'm just gonna say it, put it out there. If I'm wrong, I'm sure Ms. Brandt or anybody else. Let me know. And um. And I don't know that the community can micromanage everything we do. And, but I also think. So I, you know, except for elect the right people and make sure that people they get put on the planning commission. Or, or, or any other commission are doing.
People's work.
Doing the people's work, yeah, doing what's right for the community. So we can't, I mean, I cannot see us taking on concept meetings, to be honest with you. Given the amplitude, we're here at ten o'clock at night, eleven o'clock at night, nine o'clock at night, that's not gonna be. I don't, just don't think that that's realistic.
So that's why I was trying to propose an alternate, and then um Jan proposed a different alternate.
What's your alternate?
I was saying, why not just have the concept meeting become public? I don't think that's workable now that we've talked about it. But having a public meeting between the concept meeting, final concept meeting, and coming to the planning commission. To discuss it with the public, I thought was what you tossed out.
Yeah, I think the other thing we could do, and this has to do with the use of the website, is a lot of, a most. If you look at what like Pittsfield Township does, as soon as a project is submitted. Which means it's way ahead of it even being put on an agenda. It, it's scanned in and available to the public.
And Ann Arbor has it in the lobby.
We. Well, we have it in the lobby.
We need it on, in front of the public, and so therefore.
How does Pittsfield's planning commission look at it?
Well, I mean, the same way we do, but, but what this does is it's earlier, it's put on.
Socialized.
Yeah, as soon as it's submitted, it's public information.
Pending projects, projects under review, projects under submission. And don't submit them if you're not ready for it to go.
But the planning commission still looks at it.
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah.
So we would also.
Yeah, it's just that the public gets to see it sooner. As soon as it's submitted, it's, it's a known public document. And it's, it's available on the website. Which would be, and then if we are using the, you know, the website and so forth, people could sign up. And they would get a notification when a project came in.
So just as an example, this gentleman who wanted to have his rezoning from ag to residential paid how much? It was on the, did you saw, it was on the.
On the application.
On the application.
Yeah.
A certain sum.
You're talking about just to file the.
But there's a, if you go on the website, there's a fee schedule.
Right.
Yeah, and those, that's what people.
Nine hundred dollars plus four hundred and seventy six, like one, one thousand three hundred and seventy six.
So he made thirteen hundred bucks to get his, to get that parcel rezoned. And what is it? Do developers pay something similar?
It, it's, it's, it's a formula.
Okay. And that's, uh, that's a policy distinction set by the board?
Yeah, it's a fee schedule.
We have a fee schedule for um site plan, rezonings, P U Vs.
And whether there's a fee scheduled for concept plan, is that, is that what the?
Yeah.
There's one for that.
Okay, alright. So that, that's something that can be addressed by the board.
Yeah, and that's a policy, I'm gonna grant some policy. And how often is that addressed by the board?
Hasn't been addressed in probably fifteen years.
So, or fees, we know are low.
I, I would hope we would get data from other cities, townships, best practices, things like that.
I, I think there is another issue too.
Okay, can I just interject some?
Fees have to, they can't be over and above your cost either.
So I'm just looking at the email where I went to a, we, a pre-app meeting, is a pre-app meeting? Concept review meeting?
No, it, it, it's a, yes.
Well, I'm just gonna say that the uh, uh Ms. Zuma in- indicated in her email to me that the fee. For attendance is for engineering and a, a planning commission, uh commissioner representative. Which was five hundred and twenty-five dollars, but that was for a pre-app meeting.
Which are scheduled during Doug's time when he's here. So part of that is.
Oh, I see.
Cuz we're paying.
He's on the deck already.
Right.
But why can't we recover that?
Yeah, we could.
So, I mean, Bob, you're gonna report to the board unless you want me to write to the board, is the issue of fees?
Take it.
No, 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 so, you know, I.
We, yeah, there should be a review of, of, of development fees uh to be sure that we're capturing uh our costs. Or at least addressing our costs. Okay.
So, what I got from that is this probably isn't going to change. Let's leave it as a concept, that's the same people we talked about.
Which is what, zoning?
Well, that would be my preference. I don't know about anybody else.
Member of planning commissioner and such other staffs, consultant staff as deemed appropriate. I think that's better to say it. I think that's better policy.
Yeah, and I think it needs to get in front of the public.
Yeah, and, and so that would be a recommendation to the, the board to work on our, our website communication so that. We can, um, I think we decided that Doug was gonna talk at least in our meetings about what has come in. And we should probably have that list, we should kind of have a list that gets um put into the topic. She tracks it, yeah. Yeah, and that would be good, at least every meeting there would be, yeah, these are the, the projects that have come.
And, and for those that are watching at home or might read these minutes at some time in the future. I'm accessible. I mean, th- this idea that the planner is not accessible to the public. I mean, I meet with a lot of residents on a pretty regular basis, and they ask me about projects. And so people who are interested in a project that's in their neighborhood, they find out the projects in the neighborhood. I either get phone calls on a pretty regular basis for meeting here at the township. I'm, I'm available Tuesdays and Thursdays, every Tuesday and Thursday for meetings with not just developers, but also the residents of the township. And it's not uncommon for me to meet with residents that ask me about, hey, what about that project that's coming in my neighborhood, whatever. And so.
They have to know about it, ask about it. So getting the word out there is pretty.
And so I think there's a much ro- more robust use of our website that we can do to be able to do that.
Do you think that these meetings um that we do, the, the actual hearings or whatnot, do they move too fast? Like, are we? I've just got here, are we, are we approving projects too fast? Is, cuz part of the um. Yes, part of what I'm hearing uh is that. Uh, the public doesn't have time to react to these larger projects. And so would it? Would it be a good idea to say that we cannot approve of certain types of projects? Without uh, without, without at least two meetings?
We could do that, we.
It used, it, it used to be the policy of the township. To whenever there was a public hearing, we did not take action in public here. Just, this is one thing I have. We would even announce that in the beginning of a public hearing. This is a public hearing to take comments from the public only. No action will take place tonight.
I like that idea.
And so then we would receive all the comments, we tried to distill them, come back at the next meeting or whatever, whatever they have to come back. We kinda got away from that. Now, I'll tell you when we kinda got away from it, is during the really bad part of the recession. When we're only getting like one project every three months. And so it seemed kind of, it seemed kind of uh non-productive to put someone off a month. That's the only thing we're gonna have right now. But we're getting busy again, we're pretty busy. So that might be something we wanna consider as a planning commission policy, is to not take action at public hearing. That's how things were going through the mid to late nineties into the early two thousands. We routinely have two public hearings at all, every, five or six site plans. There was a time when we limited our challenges to eight site plans, and we have eight site plans.
That's too many.
And then we limited it to five, and then we had five of them. And, and now we're not at those levels, but it's busy again.
I've felt like that too. And usually, sometimes I move to table, to table it. So, but I, I think that's a good idea to, to say that we're not taking action at public hearings.
So, there's two public hearings. There's a public hearing that the planning commission has, which is the two forty-nine per N E. And then there's the public hearing that the township board has, which is per N J. If, if, if we wanna say the vote shall be at the next one, that's fine, but there's going to be a second public hearing. Before something gets passed.
Well, when the second one would, forget the B O T public hearing, just the planning commission public hearing. We don't have to table it, we can just put it on the agenda for our approval or non-approval. It doesn't have to be a continuation of the public hearing.
No, no, I, no, there was the, the no vote shall be taken on something, like at a public hearing until the next one?
Until the next meeting.
But, but what if it's something, PKU, something, what if it's something really pretty de minimis? Do, do applicants have their, their, not their day in court, Kim, but do they have their access to? The township zoning ordinance delayed unnecessarily? If it's, are, are there ever, are, are there ever things that are so simple?
Yeah. That's why I think Commissioner Hume was saying on these large, bigger projects. I think I thought you said that.
So, so should we say that the, 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 could we say that the uh, um, the planning commission shall have the discretion? To schedule it for a vote or the, you know, at, at that or a subsequent meeting or something like that? And then should we say with respect to applications, all applications shall promptly be posted on the, you know, made available to the public when received. Uh, e- either in township hall or on the township's website, so that people.
We can't say that right now, because we don't even know if we have the I T capability to do that on the website.
But we could force the issue.
Seriously, seriously, we can't put a PDF, uh, do they come in PDF format?
We can do it.
Um, by the way, if you look at the wording of the public hearings, it does say the planning commission may or may not take formal action. So, we have the discretion. So if it is, it's a lot of times.
Page seven?
Yeah, where we haven't had, you know, there's, you know, it's a P U D, it's really complex. No, you're not gonna, you're not gonna a- approve it. Right after a public hearing. No, you're gonna ask a lot of questions and, 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 and especially if there's. Um, you know, where, where if it's a very simple, straightforward. Um, site plan that we have no, uh, you know, it needs all the requirements, just meeting with the zoning, there isn't any. You know, some comment on it. It, you know, I worry too about unnecessarily delay, because it, you know. They have to wait to join the agenda for the B O T. And it's like, one of these projects was just approved and we had approved it in May of twenty twenty-two, and it was just approved by the board of trustees. So, it, because we have that second approval for everything. It, you know, uh, that really does draw out that process. But I agree that if it's complex, if there's a lot of controversy, and, you know, I think people could say, we just heard about this. You know, we're asking the planning commission not to act on this. I think that would be a, appropriate public comment too.
So, it doesn't say that we may, somebody said that it says that we may.
I think it's on the agenda.
Yeah, on the agenda, may or may not take formal action.
But not in the, um, not in the ordinance.
No, no. It's our policy on how we're gonna handle these in public.
No, but Kim's got a good point. If it's on, if it's gonna be on the next one, and we, if it's set for an action item, we're probably gonna take an action item. The question is, is whether we let it percolate, discuss it more, or put it on the next one. So it should be maybe scared, I don't know.
So when it says possible action, maybe we need to, maybe it's a process thing that I can do as chair, or someone else could do is. Is it, does the planning commission actually take a vote on whether we wanna take action on this tonight?
Wouldn't that be in under E, like the public hearing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think, I think we tweak E to let, to have an ordinance reflect that, that the commission mayor, you know. May decide to vote on it at that night or a subsequent meeting, something like that.
So it's stated in the.
Yeah, yeah, that's like, just because you're here applicant, doesn't mean we're gonna vote on your thing tonight. If it's big, wouldn't we wanna get?
So it's thirty-six, two four, dash, two forty-eight E.
Yep.
I need to go back, yes.
Approval. Or not, you're not having at the public hearing.
That's good for the planning. Of the planning commission, is that?
Yeah, it's a discretion of the planning.
Alright.
Yeah, are we okay to, any other big?
There, there's, there's gonna be more discussion later.
Exactly, exactly. I just, and we, the next item on the um of planning projects. I think can be relatively quick, because I just wanted to sow some seeds, because we need to come up with. Um, a recommended budget for next year. And so part of that is, what are the, beyond the site plan? What kind of projects could we wanna take on that would also encompass more of Carlisle Wartman's time or the engineer's time? Um, and these are, I think, these are the ones that we've kinda talked about, but I wanna get input. So that when we're looking at what we wanna tackle next year, we have one, those, the zoning ordinance amendments list. That we still haven't gotten to. Um, a biggie would be sort of the Jackson Road corridor study. And really trying to identify, um, you know, how, uh. Kind of a re-envisioning of Jackson Road corridor, and I included this um. Uh, thing from Pittsfield about what they did with Celine Ann Arbor Road, and Mandy, we're gonna talk, and I think she'll be able to come in and do a presentation sometime in February.
I love that.
On, on what they did. And actually, Ben Carlisle from Carlisle Wartman was involved in, in that.
Pittsfield Township.
The, yeah, uh, looking at that, but I think actually talking about how they implemented, how they worked with developers and so forth. To um.
Develop the council?
Right.
Can, can I ask?
Yeah.
Do they have a downtown development authority along Celine Ann Arbor Road?
We, I don't know.
Because if they don't, then are we more complicated because of our D D A? Do we have to involve them in any discussions? We have to follow what we see.
Yeah.
I mean, it'd be good to have, you know, participation, right? Cuz they have a stake in it. The other item is, um, you know, uh, this comes from the environmental test force. Um, about planning for our own community solar or some sort of D T E solar project. Identifying some parcels of land either that we already own, or that might be good candidates for that. Um, it, it involves working with D T E because of. or that might be good candidates for that. Um, it, it involves working with DTE because of, it has to be near a certain transmission line and so forth. But, um, that was one. Affordable housing strategies. And I see two different strategies. I see, one, how do we promote more of the eighty percent, um, affordable housing? And do we do it, um, inclusively? And this is a little, um, just the different, different approaches that different municipalities have taken. And there are some that have said, the incentive stuff doesn't work, um, and have gone to mandating every development having a certain percentage of the, and then there's the actual more supportive of income housing. And if we want to look at a strategy for that, and that would be the township looking for partners, et cetera. So there, there are two components kind of to that affordable housing. And it may really be working with the trustees to have a committee that really does the labor. And I think it has to involve the trustees because there's often a tax abatement, there, um, there, there a bunch of strategies that would definitely be in the trustees realm to do that. Um, and so to bring up to the trustees of whether, you know, what their thoughts would be and whether that we'd want to, um, um, put together a housing. And then, um, I, I have to say that the, um, just bringing up the carbon neutrality, um, has, I think gotten people thinking. And I'm thinking we need to do that in like the pre, the pre-education and do it sooner, um, and, and talk about it and provide resources for people. Um, I don't know if we can actually put it in an ordinance, but there are folks that are starting to do that. Um, and, you know, we'd have to define it and so forth. So that, that's one of the items that, uh, and that also comes from the sustainability task force. So I also wanted to ask you folks, are there other kind of planning items that we want to work on?
Well, you, you alluded to it, what I was gonna bring up, but I think in a different way. Um, industrial development districts. I forget what that's called.
Oh, the, yeah, the.
Do you want to push for some of that along Jackson Road? Because it's a prime area. You might want to encourage businesses to, of certain ilks to be in there. I mean, where, it's usually the, the companies come to us and say, we want to cluster. I mean, that's what they've done recently. We want to cluster our type of business with, um, people who could use our products. But we're, we're in the, you know about this, in the materials and waste subgroup, we learned that they had an idea, and I don't know how far they got on it, for the Ann Arbor Recycling Center, um, what is it, the way? What is that yard called?
Used to be called Calvert's.
It was called Calvert's, but I'm trying to think what it's called.
Yeah.
And, and they were thinking or telling one of us that they were thinking of, uh, uh, converting some business, well, inviting businesses to move in next to them and property that they bought and use some of the waste material. Well, that would be a prime development district that we could get, if they, they would want to set that up. There might be others that we may want to.
Yeah, still looking at some of those tools to promote the type of, the type of business and.
What do we want along there? What kind of business? What kind of, um, housing developments do we want along there?
Like, this business has come. It's the residential piece that's lacking in Jackson Road corridor.
Why do you say manufacturing? Is, do we want to attract manufacturing along the Jackson?
We have it. Well, but what manufacturing do we want? Might be what we want to encourage.
Because there's only so many.
Manufacturing with housing. That might not be a good match. We're talking about housing constantly. And we, now you're talking about manufacturing.
Well, if your job is right next door, you can.
But that.
It goes on the job, right?
Like, if we could find a panel, uh, you know, housing canalization manufacturer that would do passive house panels or something like that, that would be.
There's only so many.
Depends.
Parcels of land that's available for residential or anybody. So if you focus on, I think to some degree, we have to understand the limitations. I mean, you got that Arnett's, that Exile's property, then you have that other open space property on the south side, um.
Oh, well, that's a fair point, but, well, you were talking again and again and rightfully.
Oh, no, I'm agreeing with you.
No, no, you, you were mentioning again and again and rightfully so about the need to walk pedestrian, this and that. That doesn't mesh well with manufacturing.
Not only that, restaurants are shops.
It doesn't mesh well at all. I mean, a walking district is never, manufacturing district, never seen one in my life.
But, but there are, there are. But we, we've got it right now. We've got industrial.
We inherited it, but we should be around the future.
We've got Sio Farms right across the street from I one. So manufacturing is industrial and there's different kinds of industrial. So you don't have to go heavy in, in industry, uh, but you can go light industrial. What, I'm sorry?
Then you have jobs and housing and businesses.
Then, but I don't have pedestrian environment either.
But I think there's gonna be a competition.
Everything is fine. You're right.
You're right. And that's where the planning comes in to take a look at what we've got and how we encourage the, especially the multifamily, you know, the housing along Jackson Road and create more of a place, doing the placemaking, um, stuff.
But I really think that you do want to have businesses, if not industrial.
Yes, yes, of course. Without, without a doubt. I mean, does, uh, uh,
People in residential that will shop along the Jackson Road corridor and the Celine Oak Valley corridor is a real good example of that. Yeah. So what you and I are saying is.
Industrial doesn't promote, uh, does industrial promote, uh, real estate prices?
Does it what?
Does it increase the real estate prices of houses around in the industrial districts?
Well, you gotta, you gotta, you gotta consider the type of industrial.
Right, what kind?
Exactly.
For example, Trumo, Trumo Heart on Jackson is owned industrial. What do they make? They make heart, hearts for artificial hearts. I mean, there, there's like scientists that work there and doctors and in high, but they make a product and they sell it. So that technically is manufacturing. But it's also high-tech research and it's very high-paying jobs.
Right.
And during the day, there's a lot of people that work there that can walk to, in theory, walk to restaurants.
Or bike. So what do we want to encourage?
Getting those guys, okay?
So, um, what I would like to say is open, I want to open this up and get people thinking about what, what we want to tackle. And obviously, we still have the list of ordinances that we want to implement, but some key things that I do agree that, that, that's why I put Jackson Road as, um, number one. And then I think that also the housing, uh, strategies kind of, they go together. And so I would, if, if John, if you could talk to the trustees in your, um, report a little bit or or Bob, um, about the idea of starting up a, and it would have a representative from planning commission and trustees on housing. And just really start to, you know, what do we, how, what kind of groundwork do we need to lay to promote affordable housing and, and?
I'll broach the topic.
Okay, sounds good. And then we can move from there. So also think if there are some other things that you think it would be important to tackle this year because then we have to put together, you know, sort of the special projects. Cause then, uh, Carlyle Wartman or the engineers will provide a proposal for taking that kind of study with us. Okay? All right. That was it. Um.
This one about the carbon neutrality is really good. Um, I could incorporate that when I make concept meetings, but I'd like a little bit, little tutorial.
Yeah, and I'm even thinking the checklist could be, there could even be a narrative about how they're gonna achieve carbon neutrality in this development. Yeah, yeah.
But that's kind of to the extent that the building code allows it, or can we, can we require?
It's not a building code issue. Okay? It's a, you know, we, we have a.
I think you meant power ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah, like can we require solar? Can we require no gas? There, there are some things that municipalities are doing with respect to carbon neutrality that greatly exceed.
Electrification.
Right, right.
Yeah. But however, if you just say carbon neutrality, you leave up to them how they achieve it. It could be through, I mean, obviously electrification and, and, you know, um, you, you have the option of purchasing offsets. You have that you know, you, you have a bunch of, of options for achieving it. It isn't one path. However, there is a, an easier path. Yeah.
And, and I would think in that regard, you know, we could propose those kinds of ideas. And of course, we have to balance that off country territory. We're gonna just see if they think it's something we can do. We're not just gonna go where we come up with some kind of proposal.
Is there a possibility? I mean, I'm asking a question, township attorney, then whoever, that future developments follow these mandates? Like thirty years ago, no more asbestos, whatever, example. Or thirty, forty years ago, something like that's what happened, a couple, I think, whatever. I'm, I'm making this up as I go along. Is it possible to make such a mandate? And I brought this up, I think, when we were developing the, um, yeah, exactly. So I bring it up again, another, Doug just mentioned attorneys. Is, is, are other townships, cities doing this? Saying, okay, Jan one, two thousand and twenty-five, no more, uh, toilets with the old flushes?
It, you've got to be careful because you can't, in, in, in Michigan, okay, you're, you can't require something that is in the building code. You can't require something that exceeds the building code or the energy code. Okay? In, in a specific requirement.
Still like the, the, whatever, the still has lit. The building code, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Rossit, whatever.
Ross, still, yeah, right. It, it, so, because that's the, it's a uniform code across the, but for instance, Ann Arbor is testing some of that with, with some of the ordinances that they're starting to put through. And, um, it, it'll be interesting. Um, I, I noticed Pittsfield Township is trying to do this and one of the.
And you do what?
Uh, is starting to push, um, electrification and, and some of those things. For, for new buildings. And, you know, there might be ways of incentivizing it, like giving a density bonus if it's an all-electric bill, you know, but yeah, which you can do. You just can't require it. And the issue of carbon neutrality, it, you know, that one would have to be, you know, um, you know, pushed off with the attorney. But it doesn't mean that we can't ask for a narrative, um, for, you know, they could say, we're not gonna achieve it. Um, but yeah, it's, it's just that, you know, can, what can you require versus what, what can you promote? Or incentivize?
Yeah, so that's something that probably needs someone to.
Yeah. So anyway, okay. Um, uh, just our reports. Thank you, John. I think you've set a standard for us. And so it is after ten o'clock and I just want to say, are there some key, um, reports that, that people want to give? Fire Services, we've been invited to come, uh, Janu-, I think it's the January seventeenth meeting.
No, the, the report is out and it's part of tomorrow's packet, but the public, just FYI.
Okay.
Download the report, look at it before the meeting so you can ask your questions.
It's on the website.
What I mean, so.
Okay.
No, that was. So you say it's in your packets for your review. That's good.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not an agenda item that I know of until the seventeenth.
Other than review, it, you know, it's not a discussion. It's just.
And, and, uh, anybody in the public that wants to review, go to the fire services section. So you, you click on the committees and you select that committee and you can find it on that.
It's in the packet as a report.
Okay. So, uh, OHM, did you have anything that you wanted to report on?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug, any, uh, have we had some more applications? Nope. Okay. All right. Yes.
Just wanted to see that the, um, parks and the tap.
There you go. Okay.
All right. You'll find the application on the, um, website.
Um, then I just, zoning board of appeals, kind of an interesting thing happened. The applicant didn't show up. Um, and what's interesting is, you know, they're required to show up because it's almost a, like a proceeding. Um, but it, in our, um, explanation, it doesn't say that, um, I forget what that legal term of it is, but, um, it, it wa, it was actually discharged or something like that because, um, the applicant didn't show up. And so you have to come back and do, you know, pay a fee, et cetera. But that wasn't communicated clearly in the information. So this, um, so we are going to be, uh, without a fee, um, hearing it, rescheduling it. Yeah. So that, that was sort of an interesting case. Um, anything, um, that we, we're still trying to figure out the issue with the DDA, but so you're no longer on the DDA, but you're taking over roads. Um, they meet.
Roads map. Um, nothing terribly pertinent for the planning commission this time. They elected officers. Um, uh, some of, uh, some procedural items like how to elect, how often they elect officers. Um, sent a, uh, budget recommendation to the, to the board.
Okay, um, let's see. Here, I'm hearing a little watershed. Anything there?
No, there's not really anything except there's a meeting. Next week sometime. Doesn't really matter. But we'll be meeting later.
Um, the, uh, Environmental Sustainability Task Force has a meeting, uh, Thursday night. Um, I do want to say a couple of things. We did not get, um, uh, another project, CESE project team to continue with the um, community engagement. So we're gonna have to look at some alternatives for that. Oh, we need that website. Um, and, uh, hopefully, we're gonna be starting to, you know, actually write the plan now and hope in February, there'll be another presentation to this body. Um, it was sort of a draft plan. And trustees have said they do want to, you know, be the approving body for that. Um, I think the other thing is, Kim, would you be available for February preempt rotation?
That would be for me. I will.
Okay, great.
I think you, you told me that.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we're gonna do that. And, um, all right. Any other announcements or?
Minutes.
Minutes, yes.
I moved the approval of the December twelve minutes of the planning commission.
Okay, uh, motion by Commissioner Riser and support from Commissioner Hyde. Any further discussion? All right. What? Yep. We have the only minutes. Okay, then, um, I'll take a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the minutes of twelve twelve are.
Move to adjourn.
Okay, motion to adjourn. Is there support for Hume? More, uh, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned at ten ten.